Good, good.
What do, why don't we just post this stuff back here? Take that. Well, your gig should come in between workshop and meeting. Workshop and meeting. Hey, workshop and meeting. This is...
You're supposed to take those with you and when you go shopping and you go to a place where there's so many people, you have them in mind, you put it on their bulletin.
Please no.
Their bulletin.
I think I probably already did something like that. I would imagine, right? Maybe? Maybe not? We'll have time between meetings, I guess. So don't run late.
The mics are all on.
Okay. Great.
No, no, where? So then I'm going to give it a, um, do a slideshow.
Does it work? I had to change it. Nope. Don't want to know. Oh goodness. Your license expired. You should go to DMV. I'm thinking you need to go to the DMV. Hey, can we get this guy checked out? He don't have a driver's license, you're saying? But you did say some good stuff.
That one?
Yeah.
We were supposed to meet today, but just didn't happen.
Oh, Cindy, I...
Myra? Myra?
Oh, yes, sir.
Can you, can you come help Bruce?
I would love to attempt to help.
I, I like the attempt.
Hey, you know, computers are their own minds.
Make a shot.
So is it just being cranky or what? Oh, I think it just wants to...
My diarrhea's getting tired in my mouth, too.
Let's see, we didn't need that. It just wanted to show you some stuff, so...
I didn't need to see all that stuff. I didn't know I'd see that stuff.
It wanted to show you, though, so...
Pam, I do probably need to get out more, though, because it's coming to an end, like off-season.
You said it, not me.
I know. I, uh, I seen a post about Yarra, Colorado, and they have snow there, too. Yesterday. Huh? Yeah, well, Snowy Range got it the other day, too.
I know. I was watching Jim Reivers', um, Snowy Range, because he's a, um, patrol, ski patrol. He has a special link. He was watching it snow, it snowy, when he was sitting in the office. And last Thursday, I'm like, turn this off. Not allowed.
It's too early. We didn't even have long enough summer.
Yeah, we're not putting that on any screen of this building.
Yeah, I mean, he's just...
Right. Okay, I'll call this work session to order. And the subject tonight is, uh, grants and whatnot, and so I will turn the floor over to you, Cindy, and whoever else.
Okay, great. Are you ready?
We are ready.
And I don't know if you see the presentations on your screen, or if you have to look up there.
Oh, we can look up there.
You're good.
That'd be cool. It feels right here.
I'll just hold on.
Do you want me to, you tell me and I can just click?
Okay, sure, yeah, that sounds good. Um, so I have a presentation for you, and I'm with, uh, the Wyoming Brownfields Assistance Program. Um, I'm based in Cheyenne. I'm with the EQ. And, uh, I wanted to come and describe, um, the assessment grant that Rawlins was awarded. It was competitive grant selection. So, um, I compiled some information, and, uh, I'm happy to keep this conversational. If you have questions at any point in time during the presentation, just let me know. And, um, we'll go through it, and then if you have, um, anything you want to talk more in detail about, or, you know, uh, anything else, just, just holler. Um, so this is, uh, assessment grants that practices partnerships, um, the way that things can work and hopefully will work. So Brownfields programs, um, have been around for about twenty years, twenty, thirty years. And, um, they've provided, uh, over two billion dollars in Brownfields grants to assess properties, to clean up properties, and return properties into, uh, reuse. The investments, um, have leveraged more than thirty-six billion in cleanup and redevelopment. Um, grants use these resources to fund assessments and clean up the brownfields, and generally leverage an average of ten jobs, ten point six jobs per hundred thousand dollars of grant funds expended. So leveraging is a big, um, component of, uh, Brownfields grants, and you don't see these things overnight. It takes time, um, to spend the money in your community, uh, to see these properties redevelop, back into productive reuse. And then, you know, after some time passes, then you see increase in tax base and also in, hopefully, um, job creation. Um, so we have, uh, a Brownfields Assistance Program. And what we hope to do, at least tonight for this conversation, is to, um, help Rawlins navigate the Brownfields world. Um, the grant that was just awarded in your cooperative agreement is just days old. And, um, and what that grant, that five hundred thousand dollars, that half million dollar grant, can do and what it can't do for your community. Um, so, let's see, your, your grant was announced on May twenty-third. Um, five hundred thousand dollars in a Brownfields Assessment Grant. And that's to conduct environmental, um, assessments and develop cleanup plans. And so, um, the grant application, um, I think it mentioned twenty high priority properties. Target area is the Interstate, um, eighty corridor, um, like the, the hotels, the motels, uh, Pink Hotel. Uh, let's see, the eight twenty-two pond, um, some of the other hotels on that, uh, Spruce Street. So, um, that was the, uh, the core of the grant application. So, um, it was a highly competitive competition, and so congratulations on the award. So it's a pretty big deal. I believe this is the only assessment grant, other than the one that the state has right now, that the state of Wyoming, um, has that's active. No, Cheyenne has one as well, so just two in the state right now. So, good job. Um, so many of the sites, uh, they're boarded up and vacant. I'm sure everybody who lives here, you know where they are. Um, the contamination generally is like asbestos, lead-based paint. Um, could be metals, petroleum, depends on what the historical uses of the, the property, um, was, what contamination might be. That's what your grant can do, is it can identify what, um, issues those buildings or those sites have. And so, it sounds like targeted sites are the former Express Inn, Sunset Motel, the Wyoming Bar, some abandoned gas stations, auto service properties, um, and, and basically, you're not limited to what was in the grant. The grant is flexible enough that you can, um, identify other properties along the way. So it's not set in stone, what was in the grant application. You know, it's, uh, it's a, it's a good start, but it's not limited to just what was in the application as far as the properties are concerned. The uses are, are basically set, but the properties are, are flexible. Um, reuse plans for the properties, um, I guess, uh, some ideas, and those are also not firm commitments, but they are ideas that were, that were expressed in the, in the application, and that was, um, assisted living centers, affordable homes, apartments, um, and hopefully viable tax generating businesses, you know, that can come out of the redevelopment of these properties. Um, so specifically, um, the cooperative agreement, that's, that's the award agreement. You guys are the, um, recipients. And so the cooperative agreement specifically, uh, will provide funding, uh, to inventory, characterize, and there's a definition of what characterized means, um, assess and conduct cleanup planning for these, um, buildings or sites or, um, whatever properties you identify. Um, so additionally, the recipient, meaning city of Rawlins, will competitively procure a qualified environmental professional. And so you'll, you'll, um, follow, uh, federal procurement processes, um, and as well as, as whatever your local process is to secure contractors. So usually it's a request for information, request for qualification, and a request for proposal. Um, likely you're going to want to contract with an environmental firm, um, with environmental engineers, structural engineers, technicians, people that can sample. And usually those environmental firms, they'll subcontract with, with people as well.
And what we've done following Cindy's, um, recommendation, and we've talked about this, um, as a group, is that KSU, Kansas State University, has a program that we've used to review our grants. And they're, um, a resource force. They had a model, um, RFQ for a QEP, for a Qualified Environmental Professional. So we aren't starting from scratch. We're using a resource for the request for qualification that is tried and true. So we're not starting over. We're using a, an app, a, a piece of template, I should say.
Right, a template. So I don't, I don't know if you guys, um, do you contract through public purchase? Do you do any of, of that? No? Okay. So that's, that's, um, just a way to basically send this out to the world, and makes it very competitive.
We do have, we do have, uh, and Lou, is this going forward? We have a, with Wyoming Contractors Association, we've had RFQs, RFPs. We've actually sent it out to...
Do you have a list?
We have a list, and they actually sent it out to architects, engineers, and contractors, surveyors.
So you're, you're looking for professional services, is what you're going for, for engineers?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, um, that's probably the way to go. Um, so you want to, um, follow those processes? You also want to actively manage, um, that QEP, that Qualified Environmental Professional, and your environmental firm. So I, I would recommend that you definitely want to be fully engaged. You want to understand what they're doing, what they propose to do, how much they're charging. You want to, you want to keep your thumb on them and make sure that you're in charge of this grant and what they do. And make sure that you understand what they're doing. So, um, let's see, the recipient, city of Rawlins. Um, you'll, uh, report on the progress of the grant and final accomplishments. Um, you need to submit your information into EPA's Assessment Cleanup Redevelopment Exchange System, and that's called ACRE. So that, whoever's going to do that, I don't know if that will be you, Pam, or Myra, or somebody, somebody's going to be reporting on these activities. So that's a requirement. Good grab. So, once you get going.
Looks like Barbara's just joined us.
Okay. Are you there, Barbara?
It might take a second for her to sound to...
To kick in.
To kick in. And then we'll be out.
Okay, great. Uh, Barbara's the project officer for this grant. So she's, uh, with EPA Brownfields, uh, in Denver.
Barbara, are you there?
I am. Oh, Amy, thank you.
Good job. Okay. So now, now that you can see and hear us, did you want to introduce yourself, because I just introduced you?
Hi, good afternoon. Thanks for having me. I'm Barbara Benoit with EPA. And I'll be the project officer with Pam and Cindy of Rawlins for the assessment grant.
Cool. Thanks, Barbara. We're, we're on slide seven right now. So, uh, so the, the grant that you have, the assessment grant, it can provide phase one environmental site assessments, and that will be conducted, uh, with your QEP, your contractor, once you have them in place and you have all of your documents, um, ready to go, quality assurance, project plans. And, um, so there's some upfront planning, some upfront documentation. There's, uh, should be a kickoff meeting. You guys should all be on the same page. I mean, it takes a little bit of time to get these things on the grab. So, um, got to be patient and, uh, work with your contractor. And once all of those things are as they should be, then they can start identifying properties. And so I think you already have some in the queue, uh, for these phase one ESAs. So those phase ones, um, any entity, the city could, could contract with, uh, with an environmental firm to do phase ones. They're often required by banks for property transfers. Um, and usually on the cheap end, those phase ones cost about thirty-five hundred bucks. Depending on the complexity of the project and how big they are, I mean, they can be fairly expensive. Um, so your assessment grant is going to cover the cost of those. Um, and some eligibility requirements apply. There's a slight eligibility process. You submit the form to EPA before you do any work. Um, and then you get that eligibility determination, um, whatever your process is going to look like to get your contractors out there. But they'll provide those phase ones, um, to you or to, if, uh, you have a buyer, um, then they can also be a user on those phase ones. Um, so phase one, qualifying, um, phase one, um, functions as to all appropriate inquiries, and that provides knowledge of the property. Basically, what that phase one is kind of like a little mini historical document. Um, what the contractor will do, they'll do a side walkthrough. They'll look at, at the property. They'll do, um, lean searches. They'll go to the library. They'll look, you know, for past spills or, um, fires or, um, all manner of things. So, so what you'll get in that phase one is you'll get a, basically, a, a historical record of the property. And so that phase one is going to say, um, you know, there's possibility that there's asbestos or that there was a, a spill or that there was this, that, and the other. And so that phase one may recommend a phase two. But the phase one is pretty useful, um, for property transactions. Um, it gives a buyer the, um, bona fide prospective purchaser, um, and innocent owner protections, should they need to avail themselves of those, um, under CIRCLA and Wyoming Environmental Quality Act. And so innocent owners, that phase one, innocent owners are not liable for investigation, monitoring, remediation, um, or other response actions regarding contamination on their property. So that phase one is a pretty important thing. You know, if you're going to buy an industrial property or you want to buy like an old, who knows what facility, um, then the phase one is not a bad idea. So it, it gives you some protection, protection should you need it. Um, so, so you get the phase one, you get this little historical document. It recommends a phase two. So this means physical sampling. Um, so, um, the phase one says, you know, you might have asbestos. So the phase two, um, you will have to draft, or your contractor will draft, site-specific sampling and analysis plans based on the phase one, based on the, um, uh, activities, um, that were present at that site. And so a lot of these are going to be asbestos. So you're going to have a certified asbestos person, qualified asbestos person, go out there and take samples. They're going to go and they're going to take so many samples of the pipe wrap or of the mastic on the stairs or the lead glaze in the glass or whatever that property, bless you, should, um, should, uh, need. So they're going to go out and do those samples. They're going to send it to the lab. You're going to get lab data back. You're going to get a resulting report back. You're going to get a phase two that's going to tell you X, Y, and Z is present on the site. And here it is. And if you want your contractor to give you costs on that, like how much is it going to take to abate the asbestos in building A, it can give you a ballpark on that, too. So that's pretty useful. Phase twos can be fairly expensive. It's also a big deal, you know.
Do you have an estimated cost?
There's no match on these, on this or anything, so...
Do you have no estimated cost of what a normal phase two would be?
It depends. So, um, for example, the state has a community-wide assessment grant, and this is similar to what Rawlins has. Ours is just statewide. It's not targeted in one particular town. So, um, we have some phase two, we have phase two work on a little property up in Casper. And that is going to be a couple of soil borings and monitoring well, and that's going to be about twenty thousand dollars. So it depends on how big the property is. Um, for example, if you're going to have, you know, a large hotel and you're going to have a lot of asbestos and, um, lead-based paint sampling. For example, one of the properties that we looked at today, um, you know, there's guidelines, requirements on how many samples you guys take. So, you know, you've got like a ton of linear feet of, of mastic or, or whatever. It's going to run into some money. So I would imagine the assessment, um, for a, a big building is going to run, I would imagine, right around. Just the assessment and sampling and analysis, twenty-five, three K. So it's, it's pretty valuable. I mean, you can burn through this grant, probably, you're not going to have any money left. I'll take the other five years. So, let's see, um, so the phase one says get a phase two, so you get a phase two. Um, and then you have that information. Um, but what I would recommend, uh, you know, when you're, you're scheduling these, these phase ones and phase twos and you have your contractor out there, you a hundred percent should get formal access. These, these folks should sign an access agreement to allow you, and your contractor be out there on site. So I think that's, it just protects the city, it protects the grantee, just protects the property owner. Everybody knows everything. So, um, yes, let's see. So either Rawlins Assessment Grant or the state's assessment grant can, can do these activities. So the phase one and the phase two. And then, we can do other stuff. Um, so in addition to the phase one and phase two, these grants, both the state's grant and Rawlins' grant, can do a lot of cool stuff for redevelopment. So you got phase one, phase two we just talked about. But, um, also there's like, uh, remediation, evaluation, and planning. You know, what is it going to take to, to abate this, this building or clean up this site? Um, but also, um, uh, like site reuse assessments, um, land use assessments, um, market studies, market feasibility studies. If, if you get somebody really good, um, you can get site renderings. You can have like an architect or a landscape architect or a civil engineer, somebody like that. They can do like these renderings. You know, you take building A, it's not in the best shape, and then they do a rendering or a 3D animation or a virtual tour of what it could look like. Um, and that kind of sparks conversation, makes people see what's possible, and it's, you know, it's pretty cool. You know, I've seen some, some really good renderings. Um, they can do infrastructure, your contractor can do infrastructure evaluations. And so what does it take to bring, um, you know, uh, water, sewer, um, electrical, um, broadband, solar, whatever? What does it take to bring these things to this property, to this redevelopment property? Um, they can do health assessments should you need it. They do site disposition strategies. That's, um, if, if you were to do something like, um, uh, maybe there's a tenant or a leasing and that person, um, wants to, um, buy a contaminated property or what? What do they need to do to be able to do that, actually buy it, you know, as a, as a tenant? So can do things like that. Revitalization plans, evaluation of market viability. If you have some ideas of redevelopment, they can, they can help identify those things. So, you know, there's a long list of things that they can do, that your contractor, under this grant. They can't do things like, there's no demolition, there's no, um, actual building. They can't go and then like build a, a building. They can't do that kind of thing. But they can do all these foundational things to kind of get you to that point. So, uh, and then there's other grant money out there. For example, like the, um, infrastructure evaluation. Your contractor can do that on the front end of some of these, you know, redevelopment projects. And then on the backside, once you have that, um, that plan, that evaluation, then the business council has grant money for, um, infrastructure plans. And a lot of, Pam knows, firsthand, a lot of money for, um, broadband. So these things can, they can work together, a bit of planning, and, you know, figure out who has what grant money and how you can use this. So, um, I don't think this grant is a stand-alone thing. I think it can just work with some of this other stuff that's out there. So, you look like you've got a thought.
I do. I have a question.
Sure.
Um, so I guess my question is what our plan is going forward. Is it, I, because I know we have several properties. So is it better to work on one property, get all the things you need for that? Or is it better to, like, do all the assessments on all the properties and then go to the second step until the money runs out?
Well, I think that's up, I think that's up to you. I think that's up to you all. What is your goal? What, what do you have in mind? What, what I'm doing with our grant, our assessment grant, is that we have a lot of projects in the hopper right now. And they're in varying stages because every site is different and every site needs something different. Some of them are just phase ones, like, um, Town and Wheatland's buying some privately-owned painters from folks. So they got phase ones from us, so, um, they can acquire those, those properties. And, you know, toward the goal of, um, owning all the properties around the airport. So that was cool. You know, that was, uh, fairly straightforward. And then we've got some really big projects like the, um, Arts and Aviation Center in Cheyenne. So it's the old terminal at the former airport, the old airport. It's a very cool building. It's got a parabolic roof. It's got mid-century, you know, vibes, and they want to turn it into an art center. So we'll do the phase one. We'll do the phase two. We'll do some infrastructure and market, um, analysis for them. Uh, maybe even site disposition, because they want to be tenants, you know, maybe with an eye toward purchasing someday. Um, so we can do all of these things to get them up to the construction plan point. Um, so that's way different than just a phase one. So I think it depends on what you want to see and how you want to do it and how good you are at keeping your juggling balls in the air, so...
What are your thoughts, Pam?
Well, I think this is the whole point to this meeting, so you guys can see what the cooperative, and I, you know, mean paperwork, cooperative agreement and what we, the shaws and the musts that we have to do. And what council's pleasure is, is these are our options and eligible activities. I think we have some properties that we named in the grant. We just, again, like Cindy said, when Lou and I sat down and we were writing this grant with Andrea at the time, figuring out these are some, we think, potential, again, for reuse, remediation, that'll get back into reuse for either prop, increased property values, sales tax, I mean, that's the key. But the bottom line is, we're talking, this is an EPA DEQ for the health and safety of our community, but then to get the reuse. So I think that one of the reasons we wanted to have this work session tonight, and Lou, jump in here, whatever, um, that what the council's pleasure is, is, you know, do we want to sprinkle? I mean, there's times, and, and when we were at the Detroit conference, I talked to a couple of people and they said, well, we thought we were going to do phase one and phase two on this property. We had allocated this much money for this property. Well, after we did the phase one, we realized we didn't need the phase two. And, and so we may allocate, you know, thirty thousand dollars for this building and thirty, just saying if that's a high sign, like Cindy was saying. You know, we, we have ten properties at thirty thousand. That's three hundred thousand. You know, maybe that's you guys' goal, but then when we get in there and we don't need, we only need to spend thirty-five hundred to five thousand. So I do think, like Cindy was saying, we're going to, we're going to juggle, we're going to juggle for a while. Um, we're going to be very cognizant of what we can do with the cooperative agreement, what Lou and, you know, what we want to do from the city standpoint. But really, what you guys, as, as the council's vision is, to take this money, to use it, to sustain this in the future. I mean, that's really the biggest win for us, is how can we take this and use it to better the community?
Right. How do you build on this? Because I, I think it's a good thing, right? I mean, you do have quite a few boarded up hotels and, and properties that are, you know, they're not, they're not... and properties that are, you know, they're not, they're not making any money. They're not, you know, they're not doing anything for you right now. They're, they're a liability. You don't know who's going to get in there and set it on fire tomorrow or whatever's going to happen. So it's definitely, you know, a good, a good way to figure out what you have and what you need to do to make it better. Um, so, and there's no match to this. You're not paying any money, um, as a match to this, to this grant, so, um, I think that you, you'll get a lot of information, a lot of data, and what you do is, and that's up to you.
I mean, I did have someone come to me after, right after it was announced that we received this, and it was a private landowner, and he said to me, well, how do I participate? What's going to be the eligibility? And we started talking about, you know, having a matrix, ranking, scoring with, um, advice from the DEQ or Cindy and Barbara from the EPA. And does it have a reuse purpose? We're not going to just take money and just, but he is not sure if he wants to develop this property, but he would potentially like to participate in the Phase One and Phase Two if needed, so he could actually have the documents to sell to get it, it back into use. So, you know, I think we're going to get a combination of property owners across the city that, you know, want to use this as a tool. And that's what we want. I mean, Barbara and I have had conversations, um, that we want to leverage this money. We never want to just take this money, we want to leverage it for a, a bigger picture.
Right. Um, thoughts, Barbara? At this juncture?
No, I'm, I'm in agreement, um, Cindy, and I can't really hear you well, but I'm trying to follow along.
Okay.
The leveraging resources is really a key component of this program.
Right, exactly. Okay, all right.
Hmm, next.
So one idea that we had, Barbara and I, KSU is going to help us with our kickoff, which is going to be on October eleventh, is actually have some maps at the kickoff at five-thirty and have the community come to this and say, this is where we think, you know, because property owners, private, this is an opportunity for a tool and a resource. And there's a lot of times that we don't have opportunities for private resources or resources for private landowners. But to have a mapping exercise and let people say, well, if we could use the money, maybe we could use some here or, I mean, they may show us some areas, you know, or corridors, you know, that we're not aware of. So we are, we are planning on doing a mapping exercise at the October eleventh event.
Yeah, just have people like stick, sticky notes or whatever, comments on, on different areas, is that what you have in mind?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just like an interactive public thing. And, um, yeah, and you'll do more of that, more likely, you know, during the course of this, when, when you have a contractor on board. So this kickoff meeting can just be like the, the start of it. And then you can, you can, um, do more if it seems like it's a good idea. And, and it usually is, it gives people the chance to comment on the front end of this, you know, the kickoff, and along the way, and then they can see the final product. Because, I mean, maybe they're, you know, they, they won't be interested, but at least you give people the chance to participate. So, you know.
And I think Barbara, in our call today to kind of prep for this, we also talked about what this ranking and scoring for the private property owners, but, I mean, some of the things you said that are ready to jump in, that want to have a reuse plan, that we don't, I mean, we, the city, I don't, I never want to speak for the council, but we want to use this money wisely that we've gotten from the EPA to actually have a cross, a project that's going to move forward. So, you know, this matrix that we're going to put together and we're ranking, scoring, also something that we brought up is, we're going to go back and look at the master plan, even though it's older, and see, you know, the vision. But the biggest thing tonight is listening to you guys, which you guys would like to see these funds used for. And again, knowing that these are the eligible activities, but it has to be for reuse, we have to pick up contamination, groundwater, lead, I mean, again, like you said, we can't just tear something down and build something.
Right, right. Your, your cooperative agreement, you know, um, tells you things that you can do and it's, you know, it's a pretty long list of stuff. And it's pretty good stuff that otherwise if you were going to pay for it out of pocket, it would obviously be happening in the books. So, um, so yeah, uh, you'll get some good deliverables out of this. Yeah, and, and just so you know, sometimes these projects really take off and sometimes they fizzle. So, you know, don't be disappointed if you have something in mind and it just doesn't bloom like you want it to, but you'll have others that, that are bigger than you, something like. So you don't know until you really get into it.
I, I went on that tour of, uh, possible brownfield
Yeah, yeah.
sites that needed, uh, attention and, uh, you know, I'm sure there's more of them, but that, that was a very well-thought-out tour. Um, every one of those properties have a definite, uh, health and safety issue in our community, and I don't know how you're going to prioritize them, but I thought that was pretty well-done. And then if we have more money at the end of that to look for other sites, that'd be wonderful, but most of those seem pretty, pretty outstanding to me.
So, um, we've got four that we're going to do under our grant right now because we're ready to go. And you guys still, you know, you have to get your contractor, get all your documents, get all your ducks in a row. So we are going to do Phase One, Phase Two on, um, eight-twenty-two Pine, the silver whatever.
Golden West.
Golden West, yeah, yeah.
And that's all about the city.
Right, so, um, we'll do a Phase One, Phase Two on, on that property. We'll do Phase One, Phase Two on Ferguson Building. Phase One, Phase Two on Strand. Um, and then also the, uh, Nurses' Rectory at fifteen thirteen Maple. So we can do those. So Phase One, Phase Two is what we have in mind for that stuff. And then, um, also, um, I have, I've worked with Pam and we have, uh, three small grants of twenty K apiece, sixty thousand dollars, that we're going to take a look at, um, uh, three sites here and do, um, feasibility studies for the Ferguson, um, eight-twenty-two Pine. And I think we looked at, um, the Pink Hotel, but we don't have access for that. We can, we can probably still do a feasibility study, but we just can't set a foot on the property.
Yeah, and so just to what, I mean, Lou, we can, um, we're having issues, I guess, we're having challenges.
I've, I've tried to reach out to the sister of the owner of the building, um, with no luck. I've sent emails, um, tried calling, so I don't know if, is she still willing to actively work with us in this? Um, we, we do do a site visit every month on the Davis Building site just to make sure that everything's secure and so forth. But as far as any other activity, we haven't done anything else without the permission from the sister.
Now, you, is the owner not alive or what?
The owner is incarcerated.
I see.
So, and we actually tried to do, um, the city has been very proactive with a, a different, an administrative search warrant. And so Cindy, so we, we suggested that, maybe we could do it that way. Cindy took it to the AG's office.
Yeah, the AG doesn't, isn't going to allow us, excuse me, to go on the property under an administrative search warrant, is that what it's called?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yeah, yeah. He said, nope. So we need formal access, uh, to get into the building. So did you do any kind of sampling or walkthroughs or anything like that?
Is his sister part owner?
No, but she's taking care of all of his.
But she's like in charge of things while he's incarcerated?
So we're a parrot attorney.
So we, we.
Yvonne, excuse me, I'm sorry.
We're going to know and about, um, if that is under your ownership and that could change everything.
Oh, good, good. Somebody wants to buy it?
Well, there's somebody already buying the taxes on it. That's on, that's on, that's on formal record. Okay, so.
Please one. If somebody wants to get that, that hotel, I would say, think about a free Phase One under either one of these grants. That way it makes you eligible for that cleanup money. You just want to like snag it under tax foreclosure, right? That could, yes.
I'm meeting with them this weekend, so I do know that it is under contract right now. So, but these people that you're talking about aren't very, um, you know, worthwhile with investors, I guess, and communication is not doing good. But that's why the investor is coming here.
Okay.
On the Peak Hotel. Uh, the, the association with that Peak Hotel, yes.
Okay, so yeah, I would, I would just recommend if, if somebody wants, you know, to buy that hotel, consider a Phase One at the beginning of the presentation, so to make sure you can pay this owner, you know, you can, you can use that Phase One, you know, to make yourself eligible, you know, for some cleanup money or whatever, so it, it, it makes it harder without the Phase One, although with asbestos, sometimes if it hasn't been released to the outside world, you can still, you know, you might be able to do it, but, so we just recommend Phase Ones if you're going to acquire a property like the Peak Hotel, so. Um, but people will do as they will, and so we'll do the best we can. Um, all righty. Okay, this is a, a picture of, um, the asbestos insulation in good shape, probably everybody's seen it, it's everywhere. Um, this is something that, that will be sampled for. This, I mean, this is in good shape, right? This is probably pipe wrap on, on a boiler or, or some other component. Uh, the next one is more illustrative. This is asbestos that needs to be abated. Um, if it's left to become friable, it becomes respirable. If you have failing roofs and you have a bunch of asbestos, um, over time, essentially it just drips off of walls and components and, um, it is certainly more challenging to abate, you know, it's more dangerous and, you know, it definitely needs to be addressed. Um, lead paint, everybody in the world's seen this. Uh, also, um, it's everywhere. Um, it's like I mentioned earlier today, lead paint and children don't go well together. And so you want to know if you have lead paint, if you're going to have a daycare or it's in a school or whatever, so. So this assessment grant can give you like real-world benefits, you know, for your community and for your kids and, and, you know, people in these spaces as you redevelop. So you'll have that information so that you can make good decisions. That's basically what data is for, is to give you the, you know, the basis to make these decisions on what you want to do. Um, okay, so, so you, you have all of this stuff. You've got Phase One, Phase Two redevelopment planning, you've got infrastructure studies, you've got all this stuff uh, from this grant, and so what do you do then if you've got a site that needs to be cleaned up? Um, there's actually resources out there for that right now, so, um, Pam's aware of this too. There's a revolving loan fund with the Business Council for cleanup of asbestos. Um, there's like zero-interest loans that might be, um, able to be cobbled together with like some of, um, the Brownfields Program's cleanup funding, um, to address some abatement. Of course, you can pay for it out of pocket, but while these resources are available, I mean, it certainly bears consideration. Um, and so, uh, you can also, for like a, a big project, let's say you have, um, one of these huge hotels in downtown or on the, on the corridor, and it's going to be, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to abate that asbestos. There's cleanup grants for EPA, there are competitive grants, just like the assessment grant was, but when you have all of this supporting information and redevelopment plans, I mean, it's going to, it's going to be, you know, good for a cleanup grant application. And so, um, and I don't think, Barbara, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that there's a match right now for cleanup grants, right?
Not for these bill grants, effectively.
Okay, yeah, so there's no match for those cleanup grants right now.
But Barbara, correct us, for on a cleanup grant, a municipality needs to own it.
Right.
To apply. I want to make sure that's very, I mean, we can do this as a resource and tools for private landowners, but when we get to the cleanup money, it has to be held by a municipality.
The, the applicant needs to own it, yes, yeah. And it could be like a quasi-governmental agency like the, um, Conservation District, let's say, or a, um, I think.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, yeah, or the county or, or whatever that looks like, so. But yeah, not a, not a private for-profit developer can apply for a cleanup, cleanup grant, so.
And I think the other thing is continuing to learn about brownfields, even though they've been messing with this um, for the last three, three-plus years. The remediation program, we talked about today.
Yes, yeah, we did.
The voluntary remediation program.
Right, right, and so that's a, that's a string that will be tied to some of this money, some of the cleanup money. And that will be to join the voluntary remediation program. And, um, you know, some of you might be familiar with it. As a matter of fact, um, there's several sites around. Um, let's see, CIG Rollins is in the VRP, um, Sinclair Refinery, H, Sinclair's in, um, the VRP, even though they're operational. Um, there's like a Uni-Pacific site down on Railroad that's in the VRP. So it's not an uncommon occurrence. Um, but anyway, to be able to use this money, if you come into the VRP, uh, you know, we can, um, use our cleanup money to help clean these sites up, provide oversight, and you don't have to manage contractors. And at the end of the day, when everything's successful, then you get a liability assurance from the state that, that rides along with that property. So saying that it's been cleaned up, it's safe for use, whatever its intended use is. So those liability assurances can be good for a number of reasons. So, um, yeah, we can provide that. So I know it's, it's a lot, we can talk more in detail if any of this is of interest, but, um, all these things are, are designed to work together so that you can, um, clean these properties up and reuse them again.
Barbara, do you want to talk about the WBAP program?
Oh, that's us.
Oh, that's you guys, sorry.
Yeah, 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 that's us.
Wyoming BAP.
Brownfields Assistance Program, yep. Um, let's see, I think I just have like some pictures. Oh, go ahead, Barbara.
No, are you asking me?
No.
Talk about, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear completely.
Oh, no, she, she was, she, uh, Pam was just asking about the, the WBAP, which is the Wyoming Brownfields Assistance Program.
Oh, forgetting my acronyms.
I know, we're full of acronyms. Um, so I just have some pictures, you guys are probably familiar with some of this stuff. So, um, DuBois used to be a sawmill and now it's all kinds of stuff, assisted living, um, I don't know, I think a, a fire, um, training center, I don't know, fishing pond. So this is, um, a brownfield site up in DuBois. We have another one that we did at the WR meets. Everybody knows about the Roundhouse, old GP Roundhouse, it's been redeveloped um, into like a, a, a pretty awesome conference center, multiple buildings on the site.
It is incredible.
It's beautiful inside. Um, it's so successful, actually, that the city of Evanston had to hire people just to manage the facility. So it's actually in and of itself a job creator. So not to mention they hold, you know, conferences for like the Wyoming Bar Association, you know, attorneys, proms, weddings, you know, the, the whole shooting match, um, so it's, it's quite beautiful.
So last week we were in Evanston and so we were at the Machine Shop, which is this building. And then we actually held the rest of our meeting in the Roundhouse, which we don't have a Roundhouse anymore. But we, um, met, so in the Roundhouse, they have three floors left. They've done a, a convention site for weddings, whatever, but they just took the last three bays and we walked it. And there's a new brewery that is moving their, um, brewery and their packaging from Salt Lake. And so they've just confirmed and.
Oh, that's cool.
Yes, yeah, that does happen. So we actually met the owners, um, from them and they were, it's a business committed, so then they turned around and got the Brownfields project done. And now it's a business committed through the Business Council and the, on the, uh, refinery, the brewery is putting in ten million and then they're going to do a six-million-dollar Business Council. So it's a sixteen-million dollar and they, they're starting with like a hundred employees and potentially up to two hundred. So it's amazing what they've done with their facilities down there, the Machine Shop and now their Roundhouse.
Right, and, and Evanston has been really successful in leveraging a bunch of grants, you know, not just brownfields grants, but private donations like, uh, White Out Tire Grants. I don't know the whole list, you know, I should look that up, but, you know, probably maybe a dozen different grants to bring this thing to fruition.
Jim, I think Jim Davis started it and then Amy Grandfeld and Al Rocco.
In twenty twelve, we had a convention there and I remember the, the, uh, the city manager got up and was giving a speech about what they're doing and whatnot, and I remember asking him the question, don't, haven't there been naysayers in this? And that's where I got the expression, you all laugh, but. And that's where I got the expression, you all laugh, but that's when he looked at me, he said, are you asking me, do we have cave people? Citizens against virtually everything. Yes, our community had them, we ignored them, and look at this beautiful place, and I've never forgotten that expression, and it's even better than it ever was, but at that time, it was amazing.
Yeah, no, I mean, it is, it is one of the premier Brownfields projects in the state.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
I mean, they have, they have four properties now. Started with the, this machine shop, then they did the visitor's center, then they did the superintendent's house, and now, and now the Roundhouse.
Yeah.
The Roundhouse was fairly complete, because in 2012 even, I mean, they might not have had all the amenities, but I remember going through it, and it was.
The two days.
It was pretty awe-inspiring, to be honest with you.
You can ride the turn, the turn wheel, that's really cool, too.
Yep, it's, it's, it's a very cool thing.
Yep.
So, okay. Um, and, uh, here's one that's near and dear to my heart. This is, um, uh, it was a part of the former Standard Midwest Refinery. It's over on Cedar Street in Laramie. And, um, it also functioned as a Yatrian plant, I think, right around World War II. Anyway, it was abandoned, it was super crazy, scary, kids graffitiing up, there was all sorts of like boats and couches and weird stuff in there. And so, um, the Conservation District, the Laramie Rivers Conservation District, purchased this property, they did a phase one and a phase two, and worked with EPA as well as our Brownfields program. Um, they applied for a cleanup grant, um, they cleaned up the, the building, they cleaned up the soil, um, they got a certificate of completion liability assurance from our program. Um, they used, I think, a CDBG grant for demolition of the buildings. Um, and then, um, uh, Whiteout bought part of the property for that, um, Harney Street biaduct, I don't know if you guys have been to Laramie, but that new bridge. Um, so they bought part of it from the Conservation District. And then when, um, I don't know, two years ago, I think, Conservation District sold it to a private owner, um, and there's a new NAPA auto parts store on that property. So, it's a case study in what Brownfields can do from start to finish. So, this was like, it was crazy disgusting, you know, dangerous property, and they expressly bought that to clean it up, because it fit with their conservation mission. So, it wasn't an accident, um, you know, they, they followed the entire process, and, um, now it's, uh, redevelopment and reuse, so it's very cool. Um, so I don't know if you guys are familiar with Old Stony School in Sundance? Um, it's a, it's a museum now, but, um, so I, I wrote the first cleanup grant for the Old Stony Museum. Uh, they managed it, Crete County Museum folks managed the grant. Um, it was chock-full of lead paint and asbestos and, um, um, mold and pigeon poop, the usual suspects, and so they used that cleanup grant to remove all, all of those contaminants, and they have a beautiful, um, museum today. It's, it's super nice. Um, I don't think I included any of the inside pictures, but, um, so, so the person who really wanted to see this project through was, um, Rocky Corcrane, and he went to school there, um, as a kid, and he did not wanna see this building torn down. So, one guy, one, one advocate for this site, he, he made this happen. He worked with us to, to write the grant, to manage the grant, um, to raise a bunch of, uh, money to get a Business Council grant, I believe, two million bucks.
And they've had two, now we've given them a second Business Council grant, so they've got two Business Council grants, but because they worked with the, the Brownfields program, it just.
Yeah, it's, right, it's like that foundational, you know, you can't do anything when you got a bunch of mold and, and like asbestos and stuff, but if you get rid of that, then you can move to the next level, and it's like I told Pam and Yvonne, that all it takes is one person who really wants to see this stuff done, and they, you know, hopefully can build partnerships and, and make these things happen. So, but it was just one guy in a little tiny town of Sundance, and he made this happen because he really wanted it to. And it's beautiful, and it's, you know, I, I think it's a, a huge community asset. I don't know how many people are in Sundance, not many, I don't know, twelve-hundred or whatever it is. So, um, yeah, I mean, I'm sure there were plenty of people who didn't like that idea, but I'm sure they like it now, so. And this is the end. Um, this is my contact information. I'm happy to, you know, chat more anytime, or if you have questions about this stuff. So, I use up most of my time, but, um, yeah, I'm, uh, happy to talk one-on-one, or we'll be back before your kickoff, the Brownfields, um, workshop on the eleventh. So, any thoughts on this?
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I just wanna say thank you for, uh, everything you guys have done and the research you guys did for the whole Brownfields, uh, study that, and the tour you guys ended up on. Um, I kind of think the, like, my thoughts on, is kinda similar to get the phase one, phase twos done, that we can at that point, too, with the properties that you guys have kinda listed out before we go and move into something different, if there is money left over, so, but thank you for everything you've done.
Yeah, yeah, you, you guys decide what you, what you wanna do.
Is there anything that you guys, I mean, before we get to October eleventh, I mean, is there something, you know, that you guys are thinking as a council? Again, your pleasure, reaching out, you know, talking to Lou, talking to myself, you know, saying, hey, you know, we have this area, or what do you guys think about this? I mean, this is the time before, you know, once we, we're gonna, we will go out to RFQ qualifications, so we won't have it set in stone even at the kickoff, but we'll have an idea of what, you know, again, to the public, bringing bankers, property owners, whoever wants to come to the kickoff meeting. Um, but we don't set in stone, again, once we start, this could, we have up to 2027 to complete this grant, is that right, Barbara? Or like, actually have the, I think it's twenty twenty.
Twenty-eight? Is it a five-year grant, or is it a four-year grant?
Wow.
We have, we have quite a bit of time.
Right.
Now, we can use the money sooner, but we wanna be strategic on using the money. I mean, I know Lou has talked about some properties too, you know, but again, knowing what council's pleasure is and how we can direct per the cooperative agreement.
I, I would like to also thank you for coming, and I know you've been here several times in the tour and this and that, and the other, you spent quite a bit of time here. I, I gotta tell you, I did go on the tour, and, um, the properties that were on that tour, in my mind, uh, do seem to be the highest priority in my mind. I think that, I think that the ranking of those were done very well. Um, but, as always, you know, if you hit a roadblock, you go to a different direction, you go here or there, but I, I think we oughta, personally think we oughta start with those.
Well, the good news is, we already started with some of those.
Yeah.
Yesterday.
Good.
At the end of the day.
We started yesterday.
Yeah, under, under our assessment grant.
They're covering those.
Right.
Yeah, and so, so that frees up more money for you guys.
See, and I don't know, till an assessment's done.
Do we have a, a list beyond the five that they're already doing?
I think you guys do.
We do, so I can, what I can do in the next step is Lou and I can pull those up, the ones that we put in the grant. Um, some of those have changed, you know, we had made contact with some of the property owners, they were interested, because, you know, again, we can put them in the grant, but until we get, you know, access, or they wanna say, yes, they wanna be participating.
Or properties get bought or sold, and, you know, so.
So, I can get you the list of what's in the grant and let you guys, um, look over that list.
That'd be good. Right, and, and that's something that your, that your contractor can do, too. When you have your contractor on board, and like I keep saying, all your ducks in a row, your, you know, all your documents, so they can go out in your community and they can do the inventory. You know, they can, they can help you work through the inventory, and they can help you prioritize these things, too. And, so, yeah, I mean, they, they can help with that, if that's something that you want them to do, or you can just do it yourself.
Along with that list, Lou, it sounded like you had other properties also kind of in mind. Um, can you kinda compile that list also and maybe send it over?
Okay. We'll just compile the list that I have and the one that Pam has, and, and this out.
Yeah.
Any other comment, questions?
I know when you rank them, for me, it'd be the worst ones, of course, the ones that are affecting pu- public health, once you get a buyer, um, buy-in. And then, second, the most seen, the ones that have the most traffic in front of them, I think would be important to move up the list. And then, potential buyers, once you get down into the phase two and beyond that.
Right, potential buyers, I think, you know, that, that, that makes a good point, I think, um, you know, to offer up the phase one to the potential buyers, so that they are a bona fide prospective purchaser, and they have that. Well, phase one, those phase ones, though, and your contractor will tell you the same, those phase ones have a lifespan, they have a shelf life. So, doing the phase ones, it, you know, it's, it's really good, um, you know, you have that, that historical information, but they do expire, they don't just last forever. So, you can't do a phase one now and use it for that innocent owner protection in five years, work that way.
Right, 'cause liens go against it, things happen.
Somebody throws a bag of trash out, whatever, so.
I, I can tell you, as a, if you were, if, as a buyer, I would be a whole lot more comfortable with a phase one and two done. It would make me say yes where it might be an absolute no to start with, 'cause you don't know what's there.
Yeah, that's exactly right, that's what it could provide, is that certainty of what you're getting into.
Absolutely.
No, no nasty surprises when you go to break ground and like, ooh, yeah.
One property, I, I just wanna kind of, if you could, it's probably in, on your list already, but there's that other motel that's on Spruce Street.
The old bucking horse.
I don't know the name of it, but, that might be a.
The Express and.
Yeah.
It's right across from Michael's.
I'd imagine it's probably on the list.
It's on the list.
Okay, I just wanna, I, I really wanna see that on the list.
It's on.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
And then also, can you send a copy of this over possibly?
No, did you? I, I did upload it to Board Docs after the meeting started, once it was confirmed, this was the final presentation. Yeah, sorry, it wasn't up earlier.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
You didn't get it till yesterday.
Going on?
Barbara, Barbara, did you have, as our EPA director, regional director, Barbara, did you have any, Barbara, did you have anything else?
No, I really appreciate being invited, and hopefully I can meet some of you on, on the eleventh, I'm sure it'll come up, um, the Zoom meetings for, for me, who is not the best, um, platform. Thank you so much for having us.
Oh, sure, of course. Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara, we appreciate you.
And then also, I wanted to, oh, that's up. Also, so we have the kickoff for the assessment grant from 5:30 to 7:00, but we also did wanna mention that Yvonne is having, um, a class, a workshop from 1:30 to 4:30, also at the Jeffrey Center, and there, and you can go, we'll, Myra will start sharing it, um, also, but there on the EDC, there's already, already a, an invitation, so there will be a.
And registration.
And registration, so there'll be a workshop from 1:30 to 4:30?
Right, on Brownfields, if you found this like incredibly fascinating, we'll, we'll dig deeper, um, on the eleventh.
And you can see on the bottom of this invitation, we put Yvonne's workshop on the bottom of that page, from 1:30 to 4:30.
Yeah, we'll, we'll likely have our contractor there for that workshop, and.
For your, for the state.
Yeah, for the state, yeah, for our contractor, and maybe we can have some renderings and, and show you some of the things that you guys can, can do as well, so.
Tom, did you have any questions or?
All right, so none, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy, very much.
Thank you so much for, for the invitation.
Thank you, Barbara, for being here, and, uh, we will, uh, be in recess.
All right, thank you so much, I appreciate your time. Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Yep, bye-bye. Thank you, thanks, everybody.
Cindy, get on the road.
Didn't know you were so famous. Thanks, Pam.
I wonder why Barbara couldn't hear us.
I don't know, I don't know. It's messy sometimes. She said it, I thought it might have been breaking up, but she said it was actually the sound. So, I turned your guys' microphones up more and more.
Yeah, well, hopefully embarrassing won't work there.
Yes.
No, he said, he said. He said, this is middle-class.
I didn't see any comments.
Thank you, thank you.
I agree.
Safe driving.
I need to catch Lou real fast.
Do we have to sign more?
Yes. You're famous. You have eleven. He's got a notebook with a piece of paper. Executive session. That's nice.
Starting in, it's the mother stuff, right?
Oh, there's like six hundred. He said, he marked six hundred. Hello. It is Halloween, and it's usually red.
It is Maria.
I mean, you can, I, I did check it out, which is how I've done that, that's right. So, is it a minute? Three, three readings, or a minute only?
It depends on whether it's amendment or what. An ordinance, an ordinance takes three, no matter.
Okay, this is a resolution.
One reading.
For the Ps.
One, I think.
One reading for resolutions.
And the same with the budget amendment?
Yes, as long as you have it.
Cause we're just making an amendment.
Yes, as long as you have it, you have to have a public. There is.
Okay.
So, if you said you got an extra two million, that's a different story.
There's a cap, right?
Well, three million.
If there's a, if it's an ordinance, you have to have three readings.
Okay. Mary Pat would help, thank you, Card. She's presenting for Scoburn, Corbin County, Tennessee, I'm visitor's council.
Okay.
And then there's seven going around to get.
Where I didn't see it.
They, they just got.
The one with the throat with grace?
Hey! To get all, like fifteen.
Nice color of red.
To get all fifteen people to sign is like for fifteen cats, so. I was gonna ask, what's a cap on? There's a cap for you on, on this grant, but it like.
Run it over the court?
Not red. There is not.
Okay.
There's a cap on the, again.
Why change this?
There is a law, you're supposed to.
But I'm.
Through the Business Council.
I just seen it said a cap.
Yes, a million dollars. What are you gonna put in this interview?
Thanks, I just like said. Yeah, why, why was those numbers thrown? Is that company?
Why?
Is that was thrown out? Okay. No.
You're next.
No. You're next.
Just get in line. Just get in line.
Mine. It's been adjourned. I can cuddle. Okay, what is this for? What's it for? Okay, never mind.
Now we know.
I'm gonna bring, I have to go make copies for the rest of the council, I had to leave before they could get finished, so. Okay. You're getting old when you got two sets of glasses, right?
We also did the mayor sign these already?
That's just what we're saying.
Oh, that's it? And I'm over.
Where was this, 2016?
How are you?
Living life.
Good.
Yes, I'm living.
Living something.
So, what have you been up to, anything fun?
Everything is pretty much status quo, how are you?
No, no.
The agency should not be required. Dana?
She, her and I didn't have much, she had an engineer, this other guy, he's like, sure, well, so they've been out here twice, so. But she was the one, I don't know, I was saying, her husband was great and big boy, he was the one covering core. And she's the one, we went out to state, we had a lake house. So many good ones.
The agency should not be required to inspection campaign.
That meeting was...
I know, I'm scary.
Got three trees of this at the house.
What?
I got three trees of this at the house.
I know. Oh. I don't understand this, it has a conclusion, and then it has a dissenting, oh, somebody dissented the conclusion. So, on this, and this is a case in 2016. Says it allows public record custodian to charge for inspection of an electronic record if the inspection request requires reduction of a copy of the record. Limitation on the cost charges, they'd be reasonable costs of producing a copy. That's what they decided. But, I think they also said in here about, you can look at your emails. And your phone records. I think she's making more copies. I think they're going to talk about it.
Yeah, I think so.
Want to look at it, you can. But I think that's what the, isn't that what the lawyer?
I think that's the lawyer you talked about.
Isn't that what the lawyer says too? In the email? And explained it, so. Because I was gonna ask if they... Because there they put it on the CD, so I gather you can, rather than doing paper, if they brought a flash drive or something to put it on, you can put it on that. You still have to, you still have to pay for the time it takes to get that information.
I think that bit, oh, you're gonna need to turn over.
Or you're an IT?
Yeah, I like eating everything else, a bunch of it, I guess, yeah.
You know, before all our electronic things, all that stuff was kept in a file. Oh, you want to look at something, run it to the copier, you're done.
Yeah, that's the old days.
It's much more complicated.
Well, the bad part is, is, there's a deal with paper, you gotta have paper trail, like everything, cover everything.
No. Give me that time, saving all my emails at work. Saving me one month, why'd you do that? Because this person gave me an email, said do it. After them.
I mean, they were hundreds and hundreds of emails. I mean, it's like, and I don't do anything. Ain't like I'm on the computer all the time, ain't like I do anything.
Well, ours is good at giving, you're the junk mail, I don't get the junk mail, but I, that's the work I have. With, you know, over three hundred contractors.
I mean, I know, like, I've been looking through, they're on the internet all the time, looking at stuff, doing stuff, so they get emails all the time, I don't do that kind of stuff, I get emails on all kinds of stuff.
Jackie's gone today. My goodness, a million dollar, one point seven million, make repairs.
I'd really like to see, I am doing something with the green space on the east or west end, down next summer, spring. Basically Mavericks, and all them coming in there would be...
Oh, yeah, that would be nice.
Nice to have all clean, they're gonna put that room with steel, and then we have, everyone's looking in front of it, you know? Just like I always say, if you clean your spot, if everyone else looks at it, it's pretty soon, if you can clean theirs, it's...
Budget? But where's the money coming from, it doesn't say. For the one point seven million for the repairs, or is he talking just starting the thing? Or is he taking out of reserves?
The repairs.
The defiance maintenance.
Yeah, I think that includes all that stuff they talked about last week. I'm sorry, all the radiator, the...
Yeah, it's a list.
Everything else, that part, we need to do it.
Yep, he's taking it out of cash reserves.
Yeah.
I wonder how much that will be this? Cash reserves, I mean, I know working, you get a lot of money in two, three years, three, four years, with the money now, it's fine. Even then, I'd like to see the money set aside at that point. This is for some interest-bearing something, to take care of equipment as it gets a bad.
Yeah, that's what you did with them, I think, was everything's set over.
Bad thing is... Some of this equipment has lasted much longer, right? Because we used to make things out of iron and steel.
Well, it wasn't plastic and computers.
But now, to replace it, we're gonna get something, it's gonna cost more, but it's gonna be made in cheaper materials, so it breaks down faster.
Everything's controlled by computer, everything's got computer sensors, all of that's the stuff goes down, and that's expensive stuff to replace.
Why don't GM make a retro video? You know, with roll-down windows, a cassette tape player, and a simple engine.
I got several, oh, I got several, well.
Now they're antiques.
Even with the Porsche transmissions, no.
Yeah, now they're antiques. But they were simple, simple, people could change the oil, people could, you know?
They talk about all of this stuff on the dashboard, it's much better now, because you can do all, I gotta look at everything I do, the old day when you slid the rotor over, the heat over, the handle on, and the radio...
Now you gotta find the right button.
Yeah, it way computers me, I mean, you know, it's...
My son's new car, he got a Palisade, and it like drives itself, so it reads the lines, so if you start going over the lines, that steering wheel will move this way. Which freaks you out, if you got your hands on the steering wheel, and it suddenly is moving.
I got it turned off in my truck, it's in my truck, and the light in the car, yeah, I turned it off.
And then it will slow down for the person in front of you.
I like that, I like that. It kind of scares you every now and then, you think, you know, you're gonna slow down, you're gonna slow down, and stuff, but, yeah. That'll scare you shit out of you every now and then, too. The worst ones come around this in Sinclair, if there's a car going around that road, on that sharp corner there, that'll pick up that car, and it's like, just lock you up, boom.
Yeah.
It's done that to me several places around there, and so, and the bad part is, you don't hear, you just know, so they just, ah, to slow the way down, you know? I don't like computers, I never have liked computers. I would, I would be dead long before computers took us all over.
In high school, we learned computers, I'd decode that game, you know, where it went bing, you know, a little dot, you had the head back, and a little line that would bounce it up and down, yeah. That was our computer.
I didn't deal with those computers, I mean, it just...
I'm a new council member to the local government liability rule.
I don't know how long this meeting is gonna last.
We don't have an executive session at all, it all depends on the charges.
We don't have an executive session, I don't have any rights.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so it shouldn't be, you know, short on that end, those things get along.
This, this process is about an hour, hour and fifty minutes. This, this process is about an hour, hour fifty minutes.
We got twenty twenty-two done, so at least we're caught up on what it's.
I pretty well got us caught up to where we need to be.
The man needs to take time off. It's like, why don't you take one? If you don't die, you gotta spend time with your family, bud.
Yeah, yeah.
I hope he starts looking out for himself.
I hope he finds someone.
It's really hard, I mean, even though with the refinery, we have lots of, it's hard to find anybody.
For me.
There's just so many openings and.
Yeah.
Nobody's wanting to.
Well, man, it's not. Bad wages, but it's great wages for a city.
Working for a city is hard, you get under a lot of scrutiny and, like you said, the pay isn't, I mean, what we, what we pay for what it's paying to. What you get at a firm? Yeah, it's a big difference.
Well, we couldn't even find any somewhere else, we've done somewhere else over. What usually does a lot of this?
What did they say about hiring people? Ever gonna work on that, maybe? People who owe the city money, maybe hiring them to work.
They'll work on the, on the old builds, the combined, you know, of their mines.
Yeah.
Give them the.
Do that, the summer work.
Have to work it out. Remember years ago, they seen them, went down the street painting yellow on the corners with a brush?
Just do anything.
You know, they, they, they began with them going down, paint yellow around the corner. And all that, so, I mean.
I mean, at one time these prisoners, right, in our long history.
They're, they're not allowed to do.
Not anymore, but there was a time.
At one time, they prisoners, we go, why do you be out here and clean up all the, and a whole bunch of them, you know?
I don't think it's such a bad. I mean, it was work.
Yeah.
We had to keep an eye on, on the police. But you know, and you have all those great movies where that's what they do.
The ones that usually doing that are not, that are the prisoners.
Right.
They're more or less most of them, maybe more, because they don't want to throw back.
Yeah, like the dock program, which I think a lot of people like, except they're so short staffed out there. It's, it's ex, it's a lot of extra work on those guys to do that program. And that's a shame, too.
Yeah, it's, I mean.
Can't get anybody to work there either.
What's the future?
We don't have a. It's just the advent stuff on the on strike. How can you, how can you do it?
We gotta load it down a little harder. You don't, it's like you've got a problem doing it, but probably will.
You will.
It'll, it'll.
They catch up to you. Rather he, you know?
Mm-hmm.
He cares himself.
Ain't prepared.
I think they're gonna talk about the fact that they can look at emails. Not realizing this shows that we can, at least.
Well, they can look at emails, city emails. They can't look at your personal email.
I, I think that's what that lawyer said in that payment, didn't he?
On your personal. Now, your personal stuff on here.
Look.
Like you say, you can't, you can't look at your personal, I won't. Yeah, it's uh.
And it's.
It's not the.
Changes.
Changes. You're adding a whole lot of things, a whole lot of money. Any, any of them could do it to see.
Yeah, but if you do it on your personal phone, then it's. Does any information?
Right here? Turn it around here?
Or add a meeting or answer?
Did it help with the no stress? Well, that would be looking. You know, it's not. They're putting up with putting the mail.
That's good. Yeah.
So whenever you know you're, that's not here, so you look at all the emails.
Right.
But if, if it's.
Unless you're talking to other people. Because this talks about even social media.
They can look at all the social media. It's people who understand all that stuff, do you know what I mean? If they're working off.
And you don't have to, it does not, it does not matter if, um, it's self-sufficient, it could be disgusting.
One, that's right, one thousand and all. Which is about, at one, about three, four. So I was. I have to tell. I have a rule, I have certain times. And if you just meet in a, you're not.
I don't see her, it's too.
She showed up for like a year. And he's the best way he could. So then, it was just, I changed a few things around, but.
She wants to spend her money on it. Got grandkids. I got grandkids to spend money on. Ah, that's what I.
I'm gonna have a great grandkid.
You're ahead of me.
How come you didn't paint the house on the corner down there?
It's getting painted.
Oh?
It's getting painted.
How come you didn't paint it?
I don't have enough time. There, there are a million other things I gotta do.
Retire, Richard.
Have you ever done that? You do more after.
Work, what's, what, shortly after you retire, you wanna go back to work?
Yeah, cause you're way more busy than what. He's doing a really good job. The color, I love the color. So I'm excited about that part. And I have other projects wanting to do on top of that, so.
He saved you a pretty good job.
Yeah, it's pretty quick, so. The original bid for that is I got from Kerpenfield out of Casper.
I didn't do it.
Your proclamation of the.
Oh.
Stick it up.
I went, okay.
People would tell me, Ben, what's that cost to cities? They have no idea. But they get stepped on here.
How are you kidding? You must be kidding. Must be joking. They worked. I went, okay, it'll all be you, sorry. But they had mobilization cost, you know, and stuff like that. Cause they gotta come from Casper, so.
But they bring a big enough crew down there to paint it, they could.
Yeah, they're here for four, usually four, in and out. And they've done a couple homes and they're really nice. Pam, Pam's house was something. Do a great job, it's just.
Wow.
That's way beyond. I was willing to do.
I expect to see you up on that ladder if they think the way that wasn't you. Be on you.
Things are pretty short. Man, the last two days I've been rebuilding my wood stove in my spare time. Remember the doors wouldn't close?
They winter, yeah.
They close.
It isn't winter yet, except there's snow somewhere.
Had to cut off the whole bottom piece and throw that away and then take a port of power, spread the bottom of the door. And then warp it this way, that way, this way, that way, put in a straight, anyway, it's done now.
Get a good time, you.
Huh?
Get a good time again, that all working.
I know, I'm worried about that, but, um. I actually made it in such a way that if it does, I can flex those, like the doors have those seals, you know? I'll be able to eat them up and move them up and down, I'll fill that slot with, uh, silly putty. Shut the door, open it up, and look which way they gotta go, but, oh man, what a job. And then, uh, I welded on that, well, look at my arms are sunburned from welding. Cause I, like I didn't, wasn't smart enough to put on long sleeves.
You've got to do them very good.
Well, my gloves go up to here, but I have the mother sleeves there, and I didn't put them on, cause I didn't think it would be long tack that, right? Well, next thing you know, I'm welded three feet. And then, uh. Mara Shishou has the, the United States fastest challenge. Has nineteen sixty-eight Firebird rag top, too. That was my, that was the car I had in high school and I, uh, went to Denver and there's one, same color, same everything. So I went up, how much, ninety-two hundred, I said, I'll give you eight grand. Nah, gotta have ninety-two. So we went on about our business and we came back, I stopped the bank and got nine thousand cash or eighty-five hundred cash. I said, here's eighty-five hundred in cash for that Firebird, he goes, you'll have to call the guy at the bottom for ninety-two.
Oh.
I told him, are you serious for seven hundred dollars? I lost my dream car. Oh man, I've been mad at myself ever since.
Sometimes you just have to buy it.
Sometimes you just have to do it, but in a way, but that's another one of those toys I need.
Well, and if you wouldn't know in black light, be there, two years later, you'll sit there.
I kinda was counting on it being, then I was gonna go in, I was gonna start with like little by little.
Yeah, yeah.
I tried that on them little tractor, too, I went on them old backhoe so bad, didn't funny. I've been to Kubota, John Deere, Massey Ferguson, I've been to all of them, I believe I've, I'll be with Massey just. Cause I can get it fixed by shiling. But.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the thirty thousand dollars, it's kinda got me going, I don't matter.
I thought you were a mechanic, where you gotta have someone fix it for you.
What's that, my tractor?
I thought you were a mechanic.
Oh, my.
I can weld on the tractor, I can't fix the hydraulics.
Yeah, no, I can fix that, too, but it wasn't under warranty, you don't pay, you know? You're paid for it, you don't fix it yourself. When I had my Firebird, I took it down for warranty work and I was very unhappy, being in the lab division at the hospital, very unhappy. I get there and he's like, you're a better mechanic than the one I have working on your car, why don't you go to work here? I said, you don't pay enough, what's it gonna take? And I wrote down, this much an hour. Oh, I have two bucks to it, see you tomorrow morning. No, I told him, okay, give me, I gotta give him a three week notice. I gave him a three week notice and they said, no, a week'll do it. And after that, administrator of the hospital's called me every day. Give you more, come on back, I'll give you more, again. You're about a week late. Anyway, that's, that's how that all went. And I met Debbie and really had to change scenery. We moved here for two years in nineteen seventy-eight.
Wait, you moved back?
Things were booming, no, I, you know what, we thought about going back to run the amusement park we had over there. We spent two weeks there. On the way home, it was very quiet in the car, we got clear to Laramie when Debbie said, uh, almost started crying. She'll be so mad at me, like, I don't wanna move home. Thank God, cause I don't need her, you know? And that's when we came back, said nah, we like it here. People there are just, you know, it's just a slower environment with Debbie and I being so hyper and stuff, we had to go with them, not to the vice versa. It, uh. It really downgraded when they put the prison here. Really did, I, I told them.
Wouldn't.
I went to all them hearings over there in Cheyenne. I told them.
Bother me with this, we're having a strict prison, need to hire Nebraska police.
You know that two years before that, Bruce Geary, the Nebraska legislature said we're gonna put one in Geary? And they pro, they pro, I mean, they were gonna burn the place down, and they said, no way. And they protested enough to get them to, they didn't. But they'll take our jobs, you don't drive past one one-homing business to get to that. And eighty percent of the workers are from Nebraska.
Yeah.
It's just not.
They don't know where they're working, that's why.
Well, and they said, but they said that is because of our work ethic, so we don't, we don't work, well, it's cause you don't pay nobody, they can't get nobody to work over there either. At the time they got our prison, there were sixty percent of the correctional officers were eligible for food stamps. That's the jobs, so that's the job you get. Then they said, I said, well, you know, you're gonna have to retrain your fire department. Oh man, we got the best fire department, and they do, it's a volunteer fire department, they get all kinds of accolades and trophies and everything. I said, yeah, you're gonna have to have different, no, or not. I said, yes, you will, first time you drive into a pit of dant tree, when there's a fire, you have an axe, you forgot, stand up in the truck, you just hurt people within half block. I said, it's just different, I don't know what to tell you. And, uh, no, my golly, they went for it as hard as they could and they got it. And sorry they did, cause you can't hire anybody, you can't find nobody, they're coming from Nebraska.
Oh, it's probably true, they don't pay good enough for most of the people.
Your turn.
Dangerous job.
I don't want to.
It's impressive. That's what you do. A vending machine, I was there, yeah, just had to fight it, who wants to, who wants to go?
They're really ready.
Everybody, really, it's really, I mean, all over the state.
The whole country, no one can hire anyone.
But then, but then. See, if you go and realize, you know, it's like, work, they have a Walmart, they've stopped and asked. I'll give you thirty bucks, come work for me for three hours. I bet with them, she's, she's got it now. People outside, like Burger King one day, she told the girl, come with me, she took him in, bought him three hamburgers, one for the dog and one for each of them. Long guy, so I thought, that's how to do it, my golly. One of them, wow.
And they all want money.
Cause someone, that's their job, they take turns.
Yeah, and then they go over and get a new car, I can go.
Yeah, exactly.
They had to deal with them, whatever, they would do another one to stand on the corner and watch your window. And you had videos of them where afterward, they go around the corner, getting a brand new car, right? It's stupid money, tax free.
Yeah, tax free, too. Did you do that, though? I mean, man and a mayor just.
I can say never.
I, I, I couldn't do it, I just.
What was the last one?
My mother. She was a teenager, a major quitter because of beef. And all that stuff. I was so scared, five hundred dollars a month, four hundred and ninety. Maybe we used to give that, that, under the bare gas for, thinking about it to you.
Yeah.
Probably towards the end, you need to go down, it's about there. Let's see, hell, I, oh, you did. We go to the, we rent it up, it's that, you know, relatives in there.
It was quiet, my mom and dad wouldn't do that either when I. It was the same thing we paid for. Your programs are paid. So, work, yeah, work. And never did to, that was over and. Well. I pray I never could have. She's not gonna be here today, I, I, she had a state meeting that she said. There's no executive.
She's not here to read it.
Yeah, there you go.
That's what we do, huh?
Yeah, I didn't know that, but it worked out well.
She's not here, we all do, she just reads that, nobody's business.
See, at the county, we would take a little executive to discuss and we would list on the subject. Personnel litigation, da-da-da-da-da, and anything else covered confidentially, confidentially by law, I mean, it was that quick, and then when we came out, it was, we'd come out of executive session noting that no action was taken in that minute to be signed, seen. How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good. You can't word it that way here.
But things have changed, so I don't know. Probably before, but, you know, you know, it's the flavor of the day, whatever, whatever, things are different between. It took a lot of.
Because.
Reading and. Watching these meetings to go, boy, now we, you know, that's what we used to, it's like the, call for the question. Air, not a way, call for the question, discussion told me about. Now? You can do it the other way, I have no problem with that. Part, that's part of the setup. Right, I feel it's part of the, don't get personal, speak to us. That's in our. Well, I like. We can piece it together, I don't care about it. Isn't, it's just, it's up to us. That's what it comes down to. I remember the mayor. I just bow the day for. Well, I sent them that thing that we have in front of our meetings a week ago or so and they were so happy, they were like, oh, thank you for sending that. And I said, I'm excited to know that, this is business now, we're here to conduct saving business, it's not a, um, it's a saving business, that's why we all have our phones out there, that's why our contact is totally out there, that's not what this is about. This is about. Dollar cent budgeting policy, you know, the higher. Well, you do need the.
Temporary, temporarily, yeah.
So. They have a tampe pass to still save business.
Well, so I said to the guy, I said, just tell me, said he asked me, because there were signs, he said, you have something that, did you have sex with a?
Not on board with.
Congratulations.
But I don't.
He said, you're not mad, thanks. Not mad, super happy to, you're so, I was like, just tell me what you have, and I'll order that, he goes, I wish, I wish everybody was as entertaining as you are, he said, well, I'm in economic development, you guys have done a baby, congratulations, have a successful one.
Locals call out really important.
Yeah. Mary Pat, how are you? Good, do you like her, like that?
Yeah, that's my award.
Yeah. Maybe my chief ward, yeah. Spirit Pat. She is, I mean, I remember, it's been around forever and. She's just an awesome person. Oh, we moved here one year, for one year, six years ago. See?
You've had a lot of good years there.
Oh, we have. They own here, open, they get, open the business, raise their kids.
Spend on the bit, our voice, wasn't it?
Oh, good, I know you to be married.
She's a good person.
And a good person, and well proud. Didn't know.
Yeah.
No, nice.
But they keep for one year, yeah, forty-six years later.
I thought her was good as she does tonight.
Where did she come from?
You know, you are.
Well, we moved some taxes, um, we left in California.
I, uh.
She goes up.
Steve, are you good? Whatever.
She's really shy, she's a chase.
It was exciting, you know, just think about things before we get to October eleven, you know? Lou and I are gonna be tomorrow and get that list, he's going on vacation again with we, so I wanna get that list and then I'll take the grant list and you guys should have it by the end of Friday or beginning of next week or so. Yeah. And then I told you that the act is coming in soon.
So we don't wanna do anything with that?
So we'll see that. I don't think so, cause I think, I haven't talked to many about until right there, but I think that's. Works.
Okay. Well, I mean, they'll, they'll be running.
What are you sorry for?
Hey, can I get some more, someone owes me a great, so we're.
Bruce, he don't. I, I don't know who ate all these ones. Put that back over there, please. Are we good to sign in and join?
All right. Let's see if I'm still, uh. There is it. I don't know, but, uh. Oh, there we go.
Hey, how are you? Did it feel enough, Myra?
Uh, I'm.
If he so. We'll see. That's the only page. If I have enough. Yeah. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, I know.
I got my wood burner done just in time.
Oh, awesome. And, um, I, I did, you know, chocolate flavors.
Okay, so that's a good.
I just logged into the, um, or ducks, so you'll have to refresh, so your meeting will be good.
This thing just gives me a. This thing just gives me, oh, never mind, I move it.
Thank you very much. You're welcome, that's over here for me, yeah. I love it. Yes. Yes. Did you hear, we got a boot for five-oh-one?
Congratulations.
Which, right?
Say good-bye. We're all, we're, it is, I'd say any year, well, not good, I mean, we weren't necessarily sure we actually could go through the process of two weeks, but then, um, we had Oliver Ducks and Row from the. We went down. It set us on the right direction. She went to all of these. Which was the way I.
That might house, I think it just.
Which is, yeah, absolutely, or. Yeah, chill it.
Thought you'd get rid of any more signature. Yeah, I get right on that. I shouldn't be off of that. Or just see if, I don't mind you be here. Get that kicked off. That's a good deal.
Really a lot of chances, so.
Yo, do not be sorry. Exactly. That's what I'm saying, they're the ones that's day to day and, you know, and I mean, we do too when we're driving around and stuff like that, but.
I thought they.
That's awesome.
You know, it's impossible, I don't know, it's also scarier than, as good as you can, you know, no.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's where that thing's, yeah.
Against, that makes it a whole lot of.
Yeah. What is this?
He's going over what he wants to show.
Yeah.
He sent this to us.
Yeah.
Okay, and this is for all of them as we go? Perfect. And nothing else you want up during the meeting, right?
Did I sign that? This one, or no?
Going back?
No.
No.
False oath. Scary.
All right, with seven-thirty having arrived, I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Terry Wykam.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
You, Councilmember Bruce Seeloff.
Here.
Councilmember Jacqueline Wells. Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda, Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three city council agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made in second to approve the September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three city council agenda as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yay, I've, I don't know how I got down, but I did.
Online voting has closed, a motion passes with six yays.
All right, thank you. Let me join the meeting here. All right, next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Councilman Lumen?
I move to approve the city consent agenda of September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made in second to approve the city, uh, council, uh, consent agenda for September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, a motion passes with six yays.
All right, thank you, the next thing on our agenda is a public hearing, this is for a, a resolution for amending, uh, resolution number eleven B dash eight, twenty-eighteen fees, administrative fees, appendix A, this is a public hearing in which if there's anybody here that would like to speak to that, now would be the time. Seeing nobody, I will close that public hearing and I will open up the next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing, it's a resolution authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four municipal budget for expenditures to the city of Rawlins, Wyoming, uh, city buildings. Uh, during this public hearing, is there anybody that would like to get up and speak to that? Seeing nobody, I will close that public hearing and we will go on to the next, uh, uh, agenda item, which is a pub, public comment time, this is a, uh, a time when citizens can approach the city council and speak on anything that is not on the agenda and pursuant to resolution number two C dash ninety-six, there is a five-minute time limit, is there anybody that would like to speak to the council at this time? Please come forward and sign in and tell us your name.
Patrick Gonzalez, uh, council, members of council, a couple of weeks ago, we had a, one of our residents came up and spoke about, uh, some of the city ordinances and it related to vehicles parked on Murray, uh, that resident was Art Canada, and I'm actually just coming in today to piggyback on some of the stuff that he commented on, on that day. And I'd like to address actually two things. One is, uh, municipal code one-two-dot-two-four-dot-zero-five-zero, other obstruction. According to Rawlins Municipal Code, no person shall store or cause to be stored any personal property or waste material on any public right-of-way in the city or cause any obstruction upon any sidewalk or in any alley within the city. And then it goes on and talks about vehicles, et cetera. But I wanna speak specifically to the right-of-way and blocking a sidewalk, and what I provided you with, if you turn to the second page, you have three photos of three dumpsters that are sitting directly on city sidewalks. Which is a gross violation of that particular code, and I will tell you that those dumpsters have been there. And I will tell you that those dumpsters have been there for weeks and weeks and weeks. And if I recall, when Mr. Kennedy got up and spoke, he asked the question, why do we have these ordinances if they're not going to be enforced? As you can clearly see, two of those dumpsters, one is actually located on this street over here. Actually, it's over here. The old Spectrum Building. That sits right on the, right on the sidewalk. The second dumpster sits across the street at the collection center. And the third dumpster sits around the corner, right there on Fremont, Fremont Motors. So you have three dumpsters that are blocking traffic, at least on the sidewalk on the right-of-way. So again, my question is, why is the city not enforcing the ordinance to have those dumpsters removed off of there and out of the right-of-way? There's another dumpster that sits on Eighth Street, just off of Spruce, that actually, where they placed that dumpster, it has broken the sidewalk as well as the gutter and the curb, which I believe the city maintains and pays for. So I guess my next question is, why is that dumpster sitting right there? So you have four instances, all within a basically two block radius of violation of this municipal code. And again, it's like Mr. Kennedy said, why do we have these on the books if we're not going to enforce them? The second issue I have is about a year and a half ago, there was the issue brought up of people parking against the flow of traffic. And actually, it also encompassed this blocking the right-of-way. Well, I've noticed that particularly up in Ward Three, it's becoming problematic once again. People are allowed to park against the flow of traffic. And in your City View Newsletter, Volume One, Issue Three, in the fall of two thousand and twenty-two, Page Six of Twenty-Four, Bullet Point One, and it even specifies in there about ordinances that are violations of these particular ordinances. Bullet Point One, parking on or blocking sidewalks. And we've already discussed that. Bullet Point Three, parking on the wrong side of the road with vehicles facing traffic, which is a violation of Wyoming State Statute thirty-one dot five dot fifteen. So my question is, why do we have these ordinances if they're not going to be enforced? So I would advise and recommend either they be enforced and the correct people take care of that problem, or you as a council, remove them from the ordinances. Doesn't do us any good to have them if they're not being enforced. And then when it interferes with people being able to walk on the sidewalk, then that becomes problematic because now we're creating a safety issue. But that's something that this council needs to decide upon and either enforce it or remove it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak during this time to the council? Seeing none, we will move on. The next thing on our agenda is a proclamation, and I will read this proclamation. This is from the city of Rawlins, Wyoming proclamation. Whereas the Continental Divide Trail, recognized as the king of trails, stretches thirty-one hundred miles along the backbone of America and provides access to some of the most wild and scenic places left in the world. And whereas the Continental Divide Trail passes directly through the city of Rawlins, and whereas the city of Rawlins and the Continental Divide Trail Coalition recognize that the Rawlins community provides important access and resources along the Continental Divide Trailer, Trail for nearby residents, thousands of regional visitors and long-distance hikers. And whereas the city of Rawlins has been a designated Continental Divide Trail Gateway Community since September twenty sixteen, and whereas the designation as the Continental Divide Trail Gateway Community is a catalyst for economic development. And whereas the Rawlins community ambassadors, businesses, and organizations have provided support and outreach to the hundreds of Continental Divide Trail hikers throughout twenty twenty-three. And whereas Rawlins is the first community to paint blazes on the sidewalks on the Continental Divide Trail with painting scheduled for October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the city of Rawlins provides public transportation that provides valuable access throughout our community to both hikers and residents. And therefore, the city of Rawlins does hereby urge all citizens of Rawlins residents to support the trail through programs, activities, and hospitality for its visitors. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Rawlins, Wyoming to be affixed this nineteenth day of September twenty twenty-three. And I will let you tell us about it, Myra.
Thank you, Mayor and Honorable Counsel. I think the proclamation pretty much said it all, but I just really wanted to reiterate that being a Continental Divide Trail designated community does take a community effort. I wanted to thank everybody who's involved with that. We have a committee which is interested for new members, so if anybody's interested, they can reach out to me. And then we also have ambassadors for the county. So thanks to them. And then also, like it said, October fourteenth at one-thirty, we'll be painting those blazes again on the sidewalks and extending where they're at. So we'd love to invite you guys and the community. So thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. That's awesome. All right. Next thing on our agenda is a city council report, and we'll start with Board of Adjustments. Councilman Seeloff?
Our meeting's Thursday night. So that report come in.
All right. The next one on our agenda is Carver County Council of Governments, which I'm the member of that. That also is tomorrow night at Elk Mountain. And for those of you that would like to go, it's, it's worth going to. It's, it's at their city hall. The other things that I've done, and I'm, I'm going to report on those at the same time, is we had a meeting with Harriet Hegeman. It was kind of a spur of the moment thing. She stopped and asked for myself and Tom to talk, and she wanted to bring a bunch of federal people to have like a town hall meeting and discuss possibilities of all what's out there. That kind of fizzled, but then we did get an invite to the one in Saratoga. It was crazy timing. I did go to that one. It was pretty much pointed towards Saratoga, but it was HUD and WIDA, and they are panging on coming here, doing the same type of thing later. A lot of possibilities out there. It was a very interesting meeting. I met with Panita last Friday for about an hour on, on some city business. Then on Wednesday, the thirteenth, we did have a meeting with Sinclair City Council where we went over the water system update because we are sharing the same water system and they wanted an update, and Tom may talk about that more, I don't know. But we did have that meeting. And then Friday, I went, I'm on the Board of Directors for WHAM, and we did have a Board of Directors meeting in Shoshone on Friday. I went to that. There's a lot of, a lot coming along in the way of legislation. We're watching several bills that are being proposed, and it's too early to really tell where we're at there. Took care of a lot of internal business, but I came back with a very positive attitude from that. I did also get a phone call from a lady, and I, I meant to write her name down, and I didn't. And she's with the gas company, and she had heard that news article about the cuts in the street, reassured me that they would make it very much of a priority to get those fixed because I explained to her, we don't go through another winter. Running a snowplow on those streets is, is a tough deal, but she was very nice about it, very apologetic about it, and I felt good once I hung up the phone that that will probably end up being taken care of. And that's the end of my report. So the next thing is DDA Main Street, and I'm sorry to go on so long, but there's just all those different meetings you all need to know about. And so anyway, DDA Main Street, Vice Mayor Sanger?
Yeah. So I only have two things. We have Art Beat in the downtown on Friday, October sixth, from four to eight P.M. And we have Trick or Treat on Downtown Streets on Halloween from three to five. And you can come down and see nine million little children running all over the place because they have a lot of candy and they have a lot of sugar. So, and that's it. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. I might go. Okay, the next thing is Rawlins Planning Commission. Councilman Weisenberg?
We had a meeting last Tuesday. It'll be coming before council soon. There was a pass through the planning zoning for a special use permit. It's for, gonna be for Wyoming Downs LLC, off-track betting. They come in, did a presentation to us, and it's a good economic development for the community, I believe. It's gambling, horse racing, stuff like that again, but the projected revenue is about six hundred thousand a year. That's split between the city and county, is about what I was told, three hundred thousand, up to three hundred thousand revenue. Employ about eight to ten people to operate that too. So that'll be coming here soon to the council for approval. It was recommend, like I said, recommended by the board. The other thing was the plant, or the zoning map is being looked at right now too, through the Planning and Zoning Board to get that corrected. It'll be coming back to planning and zoning in the near future also. And then on top of the stuff, it's ordinances, enforcing ordinances was come up for parking in, on the city right-of-ways, just derelict vehicles, stuff like that, fencing come up, stuff like that. So stuff is being addressed. I did put it out there that we did do have a strategic plan that council has adopted. On my own behalf, I said that, that we want to see beautification through the city, and I would stand behind them in whatever method they had to choose to go about. So just so you know, that stuff's gonna be coming up here shortly.
Where exactly is the new gambling place?
It's gonna be inside the Pepper Mill Building is where it's. They are aware of all their compliance stuff that they have to come up to date on, and it sounds like a pretty extensive deal, but if it's that kind of revenue for the city, it sounds pretty promising.
Okay.
Thank you. The next on our agenda, were you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Next on our agenda is Urban Systems Committee. Councilman Garner?
I don't have anything to report at this time.
Okay. We will move on then to update from Carver County Visitors Council, now called Discover Carver County, and.
We will turn the floor over.
To both of us. I'm Mary Pat with the old Rawlins rep, and thank you for all. And yes, we are Discover Carver County, Wyoming. And I wore this tonight because I was able to go to a trails meeting in Reno this late spring, and the hotel was so cold, I was really glad I had this, but I had so many people comment on it. Was like, oh, the Continental Divide goes through there. Yes, it does. Oh, I'm from Colorado, the BLM. I said, yeah, it's two, two blocks from my house. So I, I think that Discover Carver County, Wyoming makes a much bigger impact than Visitors Council of Carver County. Just, just in an opinion, and it seemed to be that at the conference that I went to. One other thing, well, I'm just going to say two things more real fast, and then I'll pass it to Leslie. Not being on the board before, I did not realize how the Visitors Council at that time helped support the communities. And so I was looking over what we're going to be passing tomorrow, and I realized that we do give a percentage back to the communities of the tax money that we make. And over the last three months, if we pass it tomorrow, which I'm sure we will, we will have given Rawlins twenty-three thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-some cents. So we support the community, we, in every way that we can. And so we appreciate you supporting us too. And then I just wanted to also mention, we have our photo contest, the annual photo contest, and it does end September thirtieth for the entries. So if anybody wants to enter, please submit INCO into W, Discover Carver County, Wyoming, and they'll give you all the instructions. And now it's Leslie's time.
Thank you, Mary Pat. Honorable Mayor, Councilman, thank you, our council people, sorry. Thank you for allowing us to come out and give an update. Wells, so Mary Pat just shared a little bit what we are doing. We had an opportunity to apply for destination development funds through the Office of Tourism. We were awarded three hundred thousand dollars to do that. Our first step in that destination development was to come up with a tourism master plan. What we did was we contracted with Rudloff Solutions. Darren Rudloff has a massive experience with tourism. He started down in Texas. He was in Cheyenne for over twenty years. He was the CEO of Visit Cheyenne, and now he's branched out to help all of us in our DMO world, which is destination marketing organizations. So I want to thank you for allowing Pam Thayer and Myra Miller to participate in the steering committee for our tourism master plan. We are in the final stage of that. We should have a final plan coming out to everyone. Hopefully, I'll be able to come back and present what we have determined, not only as a countywide, but specifically for individual communities as well. Another part of that tourism master plan that you might be interested in is that sign where we're at at one oh five East Cedar that says video store, video hits and games. What does it say? Says something about videos. And we are working on that, believe it or not. Christie actually started that in September of last year. We finally have gotten to the point where we're gonna sign an agreement with Wyoming signs. I am a huge stickler for keeping the money, if not in county, I try to make it in-state. So sometimes in-state takes a little bit longer, but I think it's always worth it. So we're looking forward to that, hopefully before the snow flies. Another goal is a mobile visitor center. Bags, unfortunately, we used to partner with the Valley Artisans in bags. They disbanded last year, so they've been without an actual visitor center for two summers now. We are trying to get a mobile center that we could set up just in the summertime there and somebody man it. The problem in that community is we don't have a building we can rent. We can't own buildings. We can rent buildings. So the destination development funds gave us an opportunity to maybe create something that's more mobile, that not only can we stick it down there in the summer, but we can bring it to events and have, like scheduling, we can have our mobile visitor center with information. Informational kiosks. We have partnered with, what do we call that? The Tourism Community or Committee. It was just a Rawlins Committee, and then it was a countywide committee, but they invested in little tourism kiosks that were wooden. Those are pretty much obsolete right now. So we're looking at trying to replace those or maybe even update them to digital kiosks. We have approved to partner with Visit Widget, and it's a database company that will create a mobile visitor, or not mobile, but you know, digital visitor center that you can put on any kind of laptop, iPad, any kind, anything like that. There's another part, we can do outside signage that people can actually touch and go through. So we've, we're looking forward to that next summer, hopefully. And a vehicle replacement. Last year, during March, during a snowstorm, I was taxed with taking, I was supposed to be five people back to Cheyenne from Saratoga. We actually could only fit four of us in our little car, and it was very packed and very scary. So we're looking for a larger car and maybe safer, especially on our Wyoming winter roads. We're getting a lot more trade shows in, we're getting a lot more familiarization trips, so that, we call them fam trips. So trade operators come in, they look at the area, we kind of give them things to do. Sometimes they have to come and go, and we provide the transportation, so. Staffing, we did have a change since last year. Christie Kennedy, who was with us since two thousand fourteen, actually moved to. Christie Kennedy, who was with us since 2014, actually moved to Cheyenne with her husband. Tommy Kennedy was hired through the governor's staff and he is on the Governor's Task Force now, so he travels around with our governor. So, Christie is now with the, oh gosh, she is with DEQ, so the Department of Environmental Quality in the Mining Division. But we did pick up Brittany Fiftner. Brittany came to us from Colorado by way of the Carbon County Museum. She was actually married to Tom Minzek. She has
For her five minutes.
I'm like twenty to leave. So, Brittany actually has a degree in English with an emphasis in creative writing, so she's been a huge help with us. Megan, who we hired last year, and you met her last year, she is really getting into her position. She, she does sales and event marketing, she's traveling around to travel shows. And the Riverside Visitor Center, if you guys are concerned, their last day will be Sunday, the 15th of October. Pathways National Heritage, Heritage Area Feasibility Study. I don't know if you've heard about this. Do you want to pass these out? I have a press release for you. It is, a national heritage area is just another way to promote history in our area. Vernon Lovejoy, who worked, I think he worked 10 to 15 years at the BLM here in Rollins, he fell in love with Carbon County, and he has a friend named Glenn Haas. They are doing a feasibility study pretty much on their own cost. They're, they're drawing a map around Carbon County and Natrona County. Kind of the anchor for the heritage area is the Trails Museum up there, but there's all sorts of great trails that come through Carbon County as well. So, maybe the California Trail or Oregon Trail went through Casper area, we had the Overland Trail, we had the railroad, railroad came through, air mail came through, so we have a lot of history that way. And what it does, so a national heritage area just identifies all of the nice history items that we have, historical buildings, that kind of thing, anything that anybody wants to promote historically. As far as private property, if we have a rancher that has something and they don't want it on that map, it does not have to go on that map. There's no federal, I don't know, involvement, there's no rules that they're gonna come in for private property and tell them what to do with their land. It's just, the national heritage area is just a way to highlight those historic venues that we have here, here in Carbon County and in Natrona County. So, tomorrow at Cog, I'll plug Cog again, Vernon Lovejoy and Glenn Haas will be there and they will make their presentation. It's huge, we go to travel trade shows, I hear about historic tours all the time, trying to gather a historic tour or an itinerary, I've done it, but people aren't really sold. Glenn has some amazing stats, he's been a part of two historic areas in Colorado, and the economic development and the gains that they've made through those is astronomical. So, I'm very excited to look forward to that. What we need is the backing from our community, so we have a website that people can look at, read through, and then you can just tell us if you, you support this effort or not. Glenn and Vernon will gather all the data, they will then go to the county commissioners here in Carbon County as well as in Natrona County. Those two entities will decide if the next step is a go. If it is, it then goes to the senate, I believe, federal level, and they'll be the ones that decide. So, it's very exciting, so. Other items, Wyoming Office of Tourism will be here the first part of October. Glenn Gardner is our new industry person. He'll be visiting on the second, third, or fourth, we haven't quite pinned that down. We also have a Netherlands fam trip coming through the area. It's a very fast trip. They're coming from Casper, going to the Snowy Range and back to Saratoga, spending the night in the Nantalemy. Sometimes they're really fast and we can't get them to stop everywhere, but we try. So, which brings me to the Rocky Mountain International Roundup, which is in Casper this year. That, that organization, which we're partner with, they bring in people from all over the world. So, they'll have all over the world people and hopefully we'll be able to participate in two fams, a pre-fam, which is before the conference, and a post-fam, which is after the conference. And I'll do my best to do all the great highlights, especially here in Rollins and throughout the county. Does anybody have any questions for me? Is that a lot of information, I'm sorry?
I have one thing, and this is for Mary Pat. This is from the council and from the staff, and I think you got left out on the biggest round.
Oh, this, we do it this year, this is the first year we've done this, so.
Now I know. And Mary Pat, thank you.
And thank you for appointing Mary Pat, she's a great addition.
And I'd like to say that too, this has been such a blessing for me. With my husband's death, it's, my new motto is you're never too old to learn. I have just learned so much, and I just really, really appreciate your confidence in me, so thank you.
Well, we appreciate you doing the job. Thank you, and thank you. All right. Lot going on in that area, huh? All right, the next thing on our agenda is the City Manager and Staff Reports, and I will turn that over to you, Tom.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I've got several items to report tonight to you. First off, to let you know, the Wyoming Community Gas, each year, they look to sponsor projects throughout the community, and this year they will sponsor us up to $11,323. And we will have to let them know what project the, the council would, would like to sponsor by December 31st on that. So, at the upcoming meetings in October, we'll see if we can, you know, get a list of projects to you, potential, and then see what the pleasure of the council would be. As the mayor said, we had our, our first meeting with the town of Sinclair. As you know, our water contract with the town of Sinclair has a 50-year term to it, and we're through 20 of those years. So, we're 30 years left on that contract, and we know that a lot can happen within 30 years. So, we wanted to start communications with them. We are undergoing a master water plan through the state, and so is Sinclair. And so, we're just trying to get some communication as to what the possibilities are moving forward. And at the last meeting, we, we, we were able to update the, the status of our water line, transmission line project, and we are looking to meet with them quarterly is our plan. Our water transmission line project right now, what, what the status of that is, is we are waiting to hear back from the slipboard on our Art Before application, which we've asked for design monies, that we can design the, the transmission line, the whole project, and we have not heard yet of the dates that they will be hearing public comment in Cheyenne. When we hear those dates, I will forward those on. The more that we have there, I think the more effective we will be. As we had in our work session tonight, I'd just like to remind everyone that the Brownfield kickoff is scheduled for Wednesday, October 11th at 5:30 at the Jeffrey Center. The Carbon County Economic Development Group is having their annual fundraiser on Friday, October 6th at 6:00 p.m. at the Platt Valley Community Center in Saratoga. We did, we do have a table for eight, that, that is reserved, and so if you're interested in that, please let me know, and we can do that. The last week, we started our preparation for our snow removal plan, the department heads all met, and we feel that there is a need to put together a comprehensive emergency management plan. So, if we have a larger storm, that everyone will be outlined from the onset as to what will happen, instead of calling by phone and assignments and things. So, we want to put together this comprehensive plan, and that, like I said, will be greater than 12 inches of snow. And we learned a lot last year from that, and the forecast sounds like there's a high probability of some more storms this year like that, so we are working on that. The last eight to put down is the Region Six WAM meeting will be held Wednesday, September 27th, 6:00 p.m. in the town of Wamsutter, if anybody's interested in that, so.
It's at their high school.
Yep, and that's my report.
Okay, thank you.
And what time does it start?
Six.
Six.
Six o'clock. Oh, I have one more thing.
Okay.
I can, I'm sorry. Jason has a quick update for us for an event that'll be out at the golf course. He's passing out a flyer, and then I'll let him speak to that.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, before I go over this, real quick, I do want to mention, and I'll have more of an update at the November, the first meeting in November, but I'm happy to report that we have scheduled the General's Baseball Field as well as three of the Little League Fields at VFW to be laser graded and resurfaced with new infield mix. Thank you to the support of City Council, as well as utilizing some funds in our budget from last year to order the infield mix from last fiscal year budget, and we got a $20,000 grant that gives us that one extra field for Little, for the VFW field. So, I'll have more of an update and hopefully some photos and good news about that project. So, what I sent before you is, this is exciting news, we've been talking about this and working with this gentleman for a few years. Kyle Berkshire is the World Long Drive Champion in golf. If you Google his name, you can see all kinds of YouTube videos of him actually playing Rochelle Ranch Golf Course, and he like talks his way through these videos, it's pretty neat to check out. But he and his team are gonna be here in Rollins Tuesday through Thursday, October 3rd through the 5th, and basically, he is coming here to attempt the world record drive, long drive at Rochelle Ranch Golf Course at hole number 14. So, he's working with staff on what to do and how to do it. The thing about this is the times are kind of TBA, and the day might be TBA, there will be some events going on all three days. But I wanted to extend an invitation to City Council, if any of you are interested in coming out to the course when Mr. Berkshire is out there, we can set aside and reserve some golf carts for you all and, and help facilitate that to get you onto the area where he's gonna be attempting the, the world record drive. So, I believe, or I was told by his team that Guinness Book of World Records is gonna be here, I'm sure there's gonna be some sports channels, some national sports channels, news stations and things like that here as well. The current world record is 515 yards, he likes our course because we have long holes, and number 14 is, Chris, I don't know if you know the length, it's like, it's over 600 yards.
It's a long one.
And he wants to break the world record on that hole, there's gonna be meet and greet opportunities and autographs and poster giveaways and things like that. So, we're really excited to help facilitate his team coming into town and wish him luck breaking the world record. And again, I think maybe what I'll do, and I also wanted to send the invitation to Tom and some other staff, is probably the Friday before, I'll send out an email to everybody, and if you're interested in having us reserve a cart, we'll make sure we have a cart left with, you know, City Council's name or something on it with some bottles of water and whatnot for you, so that you can meet someone in the pro shop and they can let you know which direction to go out on the course. But it should be, should be exciting, so.
Sounds great. Tom's awesome.
I just want to say thanks, it's taken a big team to get this together, it's been, what, two, three years in the making of having this come to fruition. There's a lot of outside people that's not even within the city organization that's helped with this too, so. I heard about this the other day, I knew it was, that Rollins was his course of choice for a couple of years when he'd come and played, I met him there then, and it was kind of a deal where, you know, you had competitions to go to, and now it's kind of in the middle of a, that phase in, in their competitions and travel and stuff, so. Been a lot of people working on this, and I want to say thanks, it's a big recognition to Rollins, to the Rochelle Ranch Golf Course and everything else at that point, so.
There, there has been a lot of people involved, and he had a cancellation of another event, so he's a busy guy, and so he's been trying to schedule Rochelle Ranch for a couple of years as Councilman Wykem, sorry, Weisenberg said. So, he's got this date set aside. I do want to thank Kevin Gannon, our golf pro, and Abe Colsey, our golf course superintendent, they've been working with Kyle and his, his father is his manager, and their team to talk about the course. Abe's out there every day taking wind direction and speeds and reporting it back to them, and, and so they, they appreciate the efforts our staff are putting forth as well, as well, so.
Amazing job.
I assume this will be well put into the media and
So, that, that's the tricky one, because it's, you know, he, he, we just found out today, yes, he will be here October 3rd through the 5th. The time of him actually attempting this is not exact, and it is weather permitting. I believe, I talked to Kevin Gannon, our golf pro, today, he is gonna put this out in some newspaper and other, other promotional areas, because we feel obligated to do that, this is a really big deal. If we knew exactly the date and exactly the time, it would, we would be way better prepared. But we are definitely gonna get the, the word out, and when it gets closer, if he, if he has a better idea of when, then we will let people know. And I would recommend to anybody to like the Rochelle Ranch Golf Course Facebook page or Instagram, because we will have hour-to-hour updates on those pages on the days that he's here, so we can let people know. Or you can always call the Golf Course Pro Shop, and the flyer that we're gonna be sending out has that phone number, so they can call the pro shop and get an update as well. Thank you.
That's awesome, thanks. Anything more, Tom?
The last thing is tomorrow morning, city staff will be working on the highway cleanup, if any of the council would like to come out and pick up trash along the interstate. So, we will start at the fire station two at about 8:30, and we should be done about 11:00.
Nine.
Nine?
Nine.
Nine, is when we will start, so.
And we feed, anybody who helps lunch.
Yeah, but that's my report, that's.
Okay, all right, thanks. Next thing is direction from City Council to City Manager, is there anything?
Were you still planning on having a town hall about the, once you get a master plan for the snow removal?
We are, yes, that is still in the works. We, we would like more of that plan before we, yeah, present it, so.
Councilman Weisenberg, you had something?
Yeah, I just want to ask the same about town hall on the water situation. Once it's out of sight, out of mind, there's no restrictions this year, so it kind of deters citizens of that, but it's been talked about of having an update in a town hall. Have you thought about scheduling something for that?
We have, we're, we're kind of in a waiting period on the grant, right now, the Art Before Grant. Once we secure that grant, we would be able to design the whole transmission line. Once we have that designed, we'll, we'll be able to match funding and the different agencies to the needs that we have. And that's the information we would like to share at a town hall. So, right now, we're just waiting to see if we can get the design money. So right now, we're just waiting to see if we can get the design money. That's just kind of where we're at. So there's not a lot to share. We can go over the condition of the transmission line again, but we would just like a little bit more information to be able to share on that.
All right, thank you. And then the next thing I had is just say thank you to your staff. Been hard at work with street cuts and I've seen a lot of different areas where they've filled in the cuts from water breaks, main, big main breaks and stuff like that. I think Colorado Street, I believe I seen them working today, which is a huge improvement there. So big thank you to you and your staff for getting that done.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, moving on. The next thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes. Councilman Lumen.
I move to approve the September 5th, 2023 regular council meeting as presented.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of September 5th, 2023 council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Thank you. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with five yeas and one abstained. The one abstained was Councilmember Gardner.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve a letter of support. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Weisenberg?
I've moved to have Mayor Terry Wykem sign the letter of support stating that Rollins City Council is in support of Benjamin Eid of Eid Development LLC of Michigan applying for a grant to rehab Kathy Gardens apartments located at 548 15th Street, Rollins, Wyoming.
I'll second.
Been a motion made and seconded to have Mayor Terry Wykem, myself, sign the letter of support stating that the Rollins City Council is in support of Benjamin Eid of Eid Development LLC of Michigan applying for a grant to rehab Kathy Gardens apartments located at 548 15th Street in Rollins. Is there any questions? And I, I, I'm the presenter, so I'll tell you, I talked to this gentleman who wants to go into Kathy Gardens and totally rehab it and it needs it badly, if you've ever been in there. My main concern, first question to him was, what are you going to do with the people that live there? Because I'm very concerned about it. There's no place else to put them. And his answer to me was that they have four or five empty apartments that they will rehab first, move people into those while they rehab theirs. And they'll just keep hopping around like that so that they're not going to be kicking people out or, or, you know, relocating them or anything like that. They're just going to have this project that moves from apartment to apartment and rehabs the whole building. And, and basically, that's, that's what he's asking for. And if you have any questions, I will try to answer that. And we do have Mr. Eid.
He is on line, yes.
He Eid on the phone. And Mr. Eid, would you like to speak to this and fill in any blanks I've left?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you did a pretty good job in looking at the agenda minutes here too. And it's, you know, it's pretty well summarized in there. So, no, I just wanted to thank you for your help with this and thank the City Council for considering it today.
Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Eid? Seeing none, will you please open online voting?
Online voting is open. The motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is an independent accountant's report. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to accept and place on record the independent accountant's report on the fiscal year 2022 report for Atlas CPAs and Advisor PLLC.
Second.
It's been a motion made and seconded to accept and place on record the independent accountant's report on fiscal year 2022 report from Atlas CPAs and Advisor PLLC. Is there any discussion? And I would ask you, Tom, to comment.
Yep, thank you, Honorable Mayor. What this is, is we approved the audit report. The, the, the council approved the independent auditor's report in August. What, what this is, is the single audit portion of that.
Goodbye.
And what the single audit portion of this is, is the audits report over the federal expenditures, federal expenditures that we have. And what we had that year was an ARPA grant that we used to, on the Phase One of Sage Creek. And then we also have some federal funds that we get for the Victims Advocate Program. So this is their report on that. And as you will see in there, it is a clean report. There were no audit findings at all on that. So it was, it was clean and what our next step would be is to submit that through the clearinghouse to the federal government, so.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. The motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve an authorization to, stating that we have no public comment, I guess. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to have Mayor Terry Wykem sign a letter stating that Rollins City Council has no public comment regarding HF Sinclair Parko Refining LLC renewing their permit application for industrial waste landfill number two.
I'll second.
Been a motion made and seconded to have Mayor Terry Wykem, myself, sign a letter stating that Rollins City Council has no public comment regarding HF Sinclair Parko Refining LLC renewing their permit application for industrial waste landfill number two. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. The motion passes with five yeas and one abstained. The one abstained with Councilmember Lumen.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is a resolution. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve a resolution, amending resolution number 11B 2018 fees, administrative fees, appendix A.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve a resolution, amending resolution number 11B-2018 fees, administrative fees, and append, appendix A. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Lumen?
When will this take effect? Like if he signs it tonight, will it be in effect today or tomorrow?
It says on the resolution it'll go into effect tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
The 20th.
The 20th, okay.
It says right on the bottom of the resolution it says that. Keep going, right there.
Thank you. Other question I had is if they brought, because we are in a different age where they don't have fax, but we do have memory drives, flash drive. If they brought a flash drive in a sealed, you know, container, is it possible for us to put that information on a flash drive rather than making copies? Or is that just make it the process longer and more complicated?
That's a question for Panita.
Well, it depends on how, what the process would be to gather that information in the first place.
Okay.
So the copying element of it is only a part of the project. So for example, if there's a collection of records that are in different departments that requires the time to gather those and compile those, that's the administrative portion, the actual copying expense or whether it's to paper or to a drive, that is yet a separate factor. If it was copied to paper, there's a per page fee. If it's just an electronic copy, well then, assuming that it was compiled in a way that could be easily electronically digitally uploaded. So it just depends.
But would that be a possibility then or?
It would certainly be a possibility under the, depending on the circumstances.
I mean, I definitely wouldn't take just a flash drive. I mean, we don't want any viruses anywhere, but one that was sealed, that could be a possibility. All right, thank you.
Councilman Gardner?
Can we get actual cost on the, like, what's the highest actual outside rate and actual hourly rate that we're looking at?
It depends. I mean, it really depends on who you're, if, for example, if an outs, for example, IT is, there's no in-house IT. So whatever it costs IT to do a certain project to retrieve maybe some data, it would be the actual cost that IT charges us. It would then be passed on to the requister.
So what is, I'm just curious, what is the highest per hour that it could possibly cost somebody today?
I don't know. It depends on whatever that organization's rate is and that can vary.
And so, so if somebody asked for, if they were asking for documentation for like a public records request and the research part of it, or if they just wanted to come in, they don't need IT, they should just have access to those documents anyway, correct?
It depends on what they're asking for. It's, it's very...
Just public documents.
Specific, it's very specific on what's, on what they're asking for. Doesn't, so for example, if somebody came in and asked for a copy of a prior record that municipal traffic citation, probably it would be, you know, if they just wanted to look at it, then they could look at it, but if they wanted a copy, then it would, that would be photocopies. However, if there were other more extensive research involved with their request, then that would also be taken into consideration in the overall costs.
So right now, it's, it's at least affordable for almost everybody if they need this work done at this. If IT charges $100 an hour, somebody who's trying to find documentation might be charged, they might be paying a $100 an hour fee?
They might be. And that is because that, it's not that we are assessing a fee of $100. That's what we're being charged, the outside consultant, to do it. So it's not something that we're setting.
Isn't...
We don't have any control over that.
When we were at the WAM convention, I remember them talking about something, I want to say it was administrative fees, when setting those, and making sure that it stays affordable, not, you know, you can't just go set it at an extreme. Because it, it, it deters the person from trying to get access to information. It should be readily available at a moment's notice if they come in and say, hey, I would like to go inspect this and get this documentation. They should be able to be told, okay, if you want me to help you, it's this much, but if not, it's in this documentation here. You can go through it and pull that data out yourself. And if you want to make copies by taking a picture or something, you could do so. If we do this, they, they're not going to know their rate until they get here. And if, and if, if the IT rate's $100 an hour, how will somebody be able to afford any documentation?
Vice Mayor Sanger?
That's the cost the city's paying. That's what the city pays for that IT. The recovery of that cost has to occur from somewhere.
So for person, so I guess my question is, can a person just come in and get it? Is it readily available? If it's not readily available because of what we have in place, then, then we would be at fault and it's our cost to incur. Or it should be readily available, if it's digital, if it's paper, then they should be able to, be able to search that and pull that information out without having to pay professional fees?
Currently, we do not have a filing system that makes that readily available to anyone.
Then that would be on us, correct?
The lack of filing system?
Yes. Beyond, it would be on the city's. That'd be their responsibility for not having that readily available. Because it's, if I understand correctly, it needs to be readily available if somebody's looking for public documentation.
Yes, but if the people that are providing that information cost the city X amount of money, then that's the money that you have to recover. Because the city's not asking for that information. A citizen is asking for that information from us.
Correct.
And we can't provide it except through this particular company. That cost is then passed on.
And I understand that. So my, I guess, just my point is, as long as we have it readily available and they can come in and get the data, be it digital or paper, because they shouldn't have to pay a fee to get information. Now, if they say, hey, I don't want to come in and do the legwork, will you do it for me? Then I can see them paying the fee.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sometimes that's possible. Sometimes it is not. It just depends on where that information is, what it's stored with, who has the right to look at it, you know, those sort of things. And it's not as simple as, yeah, just go dig through that, all of our 455 filing boxes. You know, I mean, it just, it isn't that easy.
Correct. But I'm just, I guess I'm just talking in the inspection side. So, because we put in our notes that no inspection fee will be charged for making records available for inspection. So that, if it was IT having to go do 10 hours worth of work and we got to pay the 10 hours, we can't charge them that because that inspection fee is waived.
Panita, will you weigh in on this?
An inspection fee is for you to, is for somebody to look at it, but there's actually a collection and the research, they're separate tasks.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering. So those separate tasks could potentially no longer be $36 an hour, they could be three times higher, they could be 10 times higher. We, do we, I'm just looking for, I would really like before we vote on this, to know our range that the per hour is going to be, or at least set a range that's affordable.
The range is going to be based on the market rate, which is going to be whatever the outside vendors are charging. Unfortunately, it just depends on what's required with each type of request and it is impossible to provide you a range when anything would be speculative without actually going through the process.
On the, sorry.
Go ahead.
On the, so, the rate for copy of each page for an eight and a half by 11 is 70, is we want to bump it to 75 cents. Is that just for the paper? Is that, that's my understanding, for just the paper, not?
Yeah.
Paper, ink, maintenance.
Okay, so, I was doing some research just to see where these fees fall. And if we go to some of the bigger box stores, their prices are not near this high. We're quite a bit higher. If we're trying to keep it fair and not make money off this, we're just trying to break even, which we should be. Are these, where do we come up with these rate adjustments?
Again, this is not a big box store where, where a government office, where there are also... where there are also some, you know, there's the considerations of what these supplies are costing our own offices.
Okay. Just one more question.
One more shot.
Okay, I was just curious if we could get the study that was used to come up with the adjustments before making a decision on this, since we're affecting almost an entire list on here.
Well, this, this list, I would just like to point out that this list was made in 2018. So, everything has gone up substantially since 2018. And I, I looked at all of these things, and they look reasonable to me. And the actual hourly rate and the actual cost that we pay to these subcontractors, it is not unreasonable for us to ask for that. We shouldn't have to, the city, the citizens of this town that did not put in a records request should not have to pay for the preparation of that records request. So, the people that put it out, put that records request, should have to pay for it. And in doing that, our city at this moment has contractors in some places where we didn't have contractors. And there's, it's not a profitable situation. We're just trying to make it to where we break even.
Councilman Lumen.
One of the reasons I think they have the actual hourly rate is because the hourly rate changes, right? As people get, you know, and to prevent us from having to go back and redo this every year as we increase salaries or whatever happens. I do that in some of my contracts where it's actual, actual rates. And I think somewhere, don't we have what we pay our people? That people can look up, they know what their salary is.
Those are contracts.
Yeah. To find out that way, how much it is. I mean, you notice that fax is, is canceled out because nobody uses faxes anymore. I mean, it used to be all your government documents were in paper form, in a file, in a file cabinet. And you could just get out what you needed and copy it. But you know, being in IT, it's, it's not like that. And trying to find which program your stuff is in, and getting it out, and looking it over, and then making a copy, it takes time. And unfortunately, we didn't budget, you know, have a budget for administrative fees for people looking for information. I mean, maybe that's something we could do in next year's budget, but we just don't have it this year.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, a motion passes with five yays and one nay. The one nay was Councilmember Gardner.
Okay, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is a budget amendment. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Lumen. I'm just tossing up coins in my head's one.
I move to approve resolution authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2023-2024 municipal budget for expenditures to the City of Rawlins, Wyoming, city buildings from the general fund as cash reserve totaling $1,740,000.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to move, and second, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve resolution authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2023-24 municipal budget for expenditures to the City of Rawlins, Wyoming, city buildings from the general fund, cash reserves totaling $1,740,000. Is there any discussion? And I would turn the floor over to you or Anthony, whoever wants to talk.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Mayor. I have some information, and then we could have Anthony fill in, I guess. Two weeks ago, at the last council meeting, we had a work session where we were able to go through the current condition of a lot of the heating, air conditioning, just the facilities in, in general. And several items were identified that need replacement, that are just end of life. And so, when we work through those and add those up, it comes to the $1,740,000. What I would like to share real quickly with you to go over is how would we pay for this? And what would the status of our cash reserves be if we were to replace these items? So, as you could see up, up above, I went through the audit reports that we have of our general fund throughout the last four or five years. And you could, you can see under cash reserves in fiscal year 21, it reached its height of $26,800,000 in total reserves, and we had $11,893,000 in what we call unassigned. And what those are, are just reserves that we're holding that really do not, they, they are not earmarked or they have not been put aside for a purpose. So, they are available to be appropriated. As you could see, in 2022, that amount dropped. Overall, fund balance dropped about $3 million in the general fund. The unassigned is at $9,790,000. The projected amount for 2023, however, we project that we put about $2 million back into reserves through the operations. And so, the amount that we would ask to be appropriated for this would come out of the $11,861, which is the unassigned balances. Now, we have had discussion that there are some items that, that we would like to reserve some of that fund balance for. One of those things that we have talked about is, is we currently have a $4 million emergency reserve. And we have talked about bumping that up from, from $4 million to 50% of the annual budget. And I have that amount in, that would increase cash reserves about $2.5 million that we would remove to put there. And then another item that we have talked about is funded depreciation. We'd like to put some money aside for future equipment purchases, replacements. And, and just for, for now, if we were to go about 33% on that, we'd be looking at about $6.2 million that we would just set aside for that. And that would be about one, one-third of the way that we would want to go. Obviously, we need to keep saving each year to go up. So, if you were to take those away, authorize this purchase, the unassigned balance would go down to about 1.3 million to 1.5, right in that, that area. We would still have all those reserves still saved. It's not being spent, we're just earmarking, you know, for those different things. So, what I wanted to show with that is, is I feel that there is sufficient reserves to make this purchase without putting the city's cash reserves at risk. I think they are sufficient. One of the other things that I would like to point out is if you take the items that we have, if you scroll down a little bit, right there, if, if you, if you take the items that we are asking for there with the estimated life of those, and I, I estimated the estimated life as best as I could, what I wanted to show is, is that in 20 years, half of these things will come up again, that we will have to replace. It will not be the, you know, the 100% of it. It would be estimated about half. And then we would have in 10 years about $320,000, and in 15 years, about $570,000. That's just the end of life as they, as they go. So, we, we would not be creating a situation where in 20 years, we'd have to come back for 1.7 million. We'd have to come back for half of it at that point, which I understand is not ideal. But we, we would be spreading these things out over that, that term. Yeah, Councilwoman.
Vice Mayor Sanger.
So, these, these dollar amounts at 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, are they calculated with inflation?
They're
No.
No, they're not. They're just based on the current cost.
Okay.
So, we could be looking at 750,000 instead of 500,000 in 10 years or 20 years?
Well, and that's fairly unpredictable.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, Councilwoman Eisenberg.
1.74 is a lot of money. I understand it's been put off on the back burner and stuff's not being done. It's hard to even think about putting that much money out there. I'm glad you say you're confident we have it. My concern is, where we're at in the fiscal year budget right now, if we move that 1.74 over there, it's going to be a lot of carryover items too, because not the, not all these projects are going to get done. 90% chance, we're going to get the same contractor bidding on the same job. They're going to be too busy to do all the jobs, right? I know we're able to invest at a higher yield, interest yield now from legislature. Is it better to not move 100% of that money now, be able to invest some of that money also, and then pull it out as we're able to do the projects? Or is that capable of being able to be done still with allocating that money out? Because it'd be assigned at that point?
Yes, even if this is appropriated, that would, that would mean that it is available to be spent. We would still invest these funds until the invoice comes in and has to be paid. And so, we would, we would like these to be done as soon in the year as we can. Several of these things are time sensitive with the winter colder temperatures. I also know that we're going to have a sizable list of Phase 2 in the next year. There's roofs that we need to have at the facilities that are leaking. And I, I know we're going to have a sizable Phase 2. And that's the reason that I would, you know, ask that, you know, this be passed tonight in this, because we are looking at more funds, you know, within the next fiscal year that we would have, have to do. And I think if we back it off too much, you know, we're, we're looking at some failures.
Vice Mayor Sanger.
Anthony?
Yes.
So, the question I have is, we're spending $1.74 million because we haven't replaced anything in how many years?
I would say about 10 to 15 years on some of the items, some of the units.
So, essentially, you're talking about $174,000 a year over a 10-year period of time?
Approximately.
So, because we don't use deferred maintenance, and we haven't used deferred maintenance, that's why this cost is this cost?
Absolutely.
As opposed to spending $174,000 a year, put in budget and replacing?
Yeah, this is something that I've, well, obviously, I inherited like a 120-year-old home. And, you know, you fix one thing, this brace, you got to fix something else. So, I would love to budget for certain things, but we're beyond that now.
Right.
It's like everything else in an older city, we just got to
Like a water system.
Well, not to bring it up, but yes, like our water system, it's the truth.
Well, you know, if you think about it, you, you built the water system 100 years ago. At some point, it's going to fail.
Yes.
And does it fail at 50 years, 60, 70? When does it fail?
Right, right.
Well, the average timeframe on a pipe, iron is 102 years. But PVC is 70.
Sure.
So, should you have started replacing it 50 years ago? Well, probably, and that's a deferred maintenance program.
Correct.
That is just, that's a normal problem in every community, not just this one. Denver has wooden pipes. They still have them just like us.
Yeah.
Theirs are just bigger. And when they break, there's a lot more people without water. So, for me, I look at it and go, 1, 1.7, boy, that's a chunk of change. You know, it's $174,000 you didn't put away for 10 years. That's all it is.
Correct, and then we're trying to make that correction now that, that's why I'm here, to help with that, so that we can put some aside and then start. But there's just some of the units, we have to change them, we don't have a choice. Our BAS system just crashed this morning, and I didn't even have a chance to get out there. I got to get out there tomorrow morning for sure to make sure, otherwise I have to walk through every building that it's on, the older system, in order to make sure that everything's working. And that's where I'm at right now, so.
One other question that I had was, and I had asked Tom about this, some of these things that we're replacing, they're in pairs. It's because we keep replacing them in pairs, instead of going, we're, we're going to make that one work for another two years, and we're going to replace this one right now. And so that they're now two years apart from each other.
Correct.
And we're not eating them in pairs.
And the maintenance not being kept up on that when we do that, and that's another issue.
Right. So, in this list, is there any of these that we can go, I want you to move that one one year that way, and baby that thing as much as you can and replace that?
Right now? No. That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm getting at, yes. I've done, the first six months, I was, when I first started working here, probably two, three times a week, I was getting emergency calls after hours. Six months, I labor real hard so we don't do that. I've gotten probably two or three in the last year now. So, we're making headway, but some of the units, we're, some of them are obsolete. We can't get parts. I can go to eBay, and they're used, and I'm like, no, we're not going to do that. And I don't believe in putting inferior parts when we build something. But we're beyond that now, and many, I would say 80% of our units, we're beyond that. And since I've been here, we've had, we've been able to replace some units. They were 40, 45 years old. I mean, that's unheard of, you know, it's like, what? There's no way, that's a danger to the communities, the date wall, to those who use the buildings, the employees, and anyone who comes in to use it. I mean, that's, that's not, we can't be doing that. We need the finances so we can get it done, and then get up to the 21st century, and then do deferred maintenance like we should be doing. And that'll help us to have a, an efficient system. So, we don't use a lot of the utilities either. That's, we're not going to get longevity on it, it just works better. It doesn't have to work as hard. We don't have to spend as much on, when it comes to maintenance. And that's where we need to be at, but we're beyond that now. And we really need to get these things taken care of.
There, go, go ahead.
On your estimated life, is that the estimated life of the old equipment or the estimated life of the new equipment? Because as you spoke, you know, they used iron pipes that lasted 100 years. I know some of the equipment in the pictures you showed us were older.
We have no new units. The only new unit we have was a smaller heater that I put in at the landfill office, and that was a year and a half ago.
But the newer units that you can get parts for and all that, are, do they have a lower life expectancy?
Well, when you say newer, you mean like 10 years?
Well, you're
Because a lot of these are 10 to 20 years old already. And we're like, that's what I'm saying, we're at end of life, and we're, we are at end of life 10 years ago on some of these units. Now, when you say new, there's nothing new out there. Well, strike that. There is a split system at the depot that I installed for a new system for heating and cooling. And we had the floods, when they flooded it out, and I installed that. So, those are new, those are about eight months now. So, we're good at that. Those will last 20 years, and now that I can keep a maintenance on going, and, which I have been. And we can do that, but that's, there's not many of our units in the building. I would love for you guys to walk with me through some of the units and crawl into the belly of the animal that I inherited. I, I would love for you guys to walk with me through some of the units and crawl into the belly of the animal that I inherited. And you can see for yourself that there's no uni- new units within ten to fifteen years. So to me, as a maintenance guy and also someone who's been doing this for forty-two years, that's not new to me, that's already half the lifespan of a unit. And with no maintenance, we're looking at maybe already eighty percent of the lifespan of the unit, we're, we're almost done. I mean, some of the things that I'm looking at, we have pulley systems that are just tearing up our belts and we gotta replace them like every, you know, a couple of months because the pulleys are bad. And those, the pulleys can get expensive, you know, so it's, and then we're understaffed. And I'm running around having to try and take care of that, I, I just can't keep up. But we, we need to do something. We really need to get the finances to get this going. And if we can get something, you know, the, the worst buildings that we have out there and then the sub, you know, maybe the second wave of things that need to be replaced and removed and then we can do that or something, but we, we, we're beyond that now, we really need to do something.
Bruce?
I think one of the things she kind of wondering about is new, new stuff we're going to buy right now, is it going to last twenty years?
Oh, absolutely, oh, absolutely, yeah, everything nowadays.
The old, the old equipment, tell me you got twenty years, about thirty years. This, a lot of the new stuff you buy now don't last as long as the old stuff did.
Well, and that's another thing, you're right, you know. But everything has to pay, has to pass a UL certification, they have to. Now, twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago when I was in the trades, they, they didn't have, really have that. So you can buy a really cheap unit and then, I mean, I put, installed units where the motors came out, brand new, they just fell out. Well, nowadays because of efficiency and the EPA standards, everything is up to here now. So even the cheaper models they used to buy, they're no longer, they can compete with carrier, train, uh, Lennox, places, places like that. We can buy the lower grade type, but they have to perform, they have. And we only get like a twenty-year now out of a heat exchanger, that's it. And after twenty years, you better start looking because, you know, you get a carbon monoxide leak, you're, you're in trouble. But yeah, we should get twenty years now. Anything more than that, I, just efficiency comes in line.
Do, do we have something in place to replace this when it gets wore out next time?
Well, we're working on that deferred maintenance thing or deferred depreciation.
Right, that's his job.
Yeah.
That is coming.
I, there's only two things that bug me about this and of course I'm going to vote yes on this, just so you know, because we need them. Well, we're going to buy all these things in one year and, and twenty years from now we're building a bomb. We're going to be replacing them all at the same time again. I wish we could stagger them, but obviously we can't. But that's one problem I see with this. The other problem is, I know you're new and I'm not, don't take it personal and nobody else should either, it's not a personal thing at all. But when we have to make these kinds of decisions outside of budget time, it really, uh, makes me go back six months and wonder if I made those decisions right.
Mm-hmm.
And do you understand?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So I'm hoping that phase two can be presented to us at budget time.
Okay.
So that we're not buying all the necessary stuff after we spend all the money on cotton candy.
I, I hear you, yeah, I understand.
Uh, Councilman Weisenberg?
Tom, you had mentioned phase two and that's scary to hear. Um, and you're talking about roofs and I know some of these are on roofs. So what's the probability of having to kind of repair already done work, right? To install a new roof on some of these projects? That's a scary thought because we might have to spend another fifty to a hundred thousand per se. I don't, I'm just throwing a number out there because we already installed this new unit on a, for a rooftop. And then we gotta go remove that to install some of the roofs. Cause I know that is a big possibility that could happen. Better to look at the budget time at that point in time too for some of these projects.
With the, with RTUs, rooftop package units or anything like that, it's not a problem to lift them up and to replace the roof, whether it's, uh, rolled roofing or the vinyl, whichever they use. Uh, we have mainly vinyl or PVC roofs that we have. Uh, we don't have any PDM, which is great because that's more of a rubber material and that, it, it pierces real easy, it destroys real easy. So these have a little bit more, they're a little bit more forgiving, the roofs that we have. And it's not a problem to lift it up a few inches because they're on curbs or they're on four by four, um, pressure-treated wood, which is code, you can do that, that's not an issue. So to lift it up, up a little bit, that's not a problem, roofers do it all the time. Uh, they did it at the, uh, one of the hotels down here. Um, they were up there and they were older units and they just lifted them up, did their roof and put them back down. So that's not an issue. Uh, normally if it's on a curb, uh, all of our units, for some reason, they're all side shots, not down shots. So it's good because they're less leaks, you know, when, but, but, uh, again, normally it's better for me as a, as, uh, being able to work on these HVAC units. Because they're inside, I can go inside and work on them because they're down shots. Um, but because these are just coming out of the side, you have to, you're forced to go put the roof and work on them up there, which is, you know, it, it is what it is. But that shouldn't be a problem. If we get good roofers out there, they know they're, they're worth their salt, they should be able to handle that no problem. They should.
Good question. Anything else? All right, please open online voting. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, guys.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, a motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is a discussion about the LGLP, uh, board nomination of vacancies. Would like to make the motion, anybody?
There is no motion.
There is no motion, just discussion? Okay, thank you. Uh, Tom, would you, uh, or whoever?
So if you look at LGLP, they send out annually, the, oh, I can go on here. So they send out annually, there are elections for some positions. And they are at two different times. So they have two commissioners, county commissioners, two elected officer, municipal officers, two representative of special district and one member at large. So the ones that are coming up for renewal, that are, their terms are expiring in December of this year will be one county commissioner, one elected municipal officer, one special district. And these positions are three-year term. Now, also, we can elect anybody on our council, which, this is just a discussion item and you can make, I can put it on the next agenda, which will be October third. And you can make a motion to whoever you would like to nominate, or you don't have to nominate anybody at all. So then the way this works is this will be an election, then it will be sent to LGLP. And then they will present, I will receive a ballot of everybody who is running. And then your, the council will make a motion to appoint, check off they want to elect Mary Smith or something for this three-year term for the municipality one, okay? So I would send that ballot back into LGLP, which would be next year. And then that whoever gets the most votes would be the one that would fill all of these positions. So unfortunately with the way, because of us, this municipality, we're not able to go to the county commissioners, that would be the county's level. The only position we have is the elected municipal officer. We do not have a special district in the, in the city of Rawlins, other municipalities do. So the only one we have would be the municipal position. So as it is stated in board docs, the act, the forms are attached to board docs as well as what they sent to me with the memo explaining everything, plus I put everything on board docs. So it's just an, for you council members to figure out if you would like to nominate somebody or you don't have to. And there is no motion, the motion will be put on if you would like on the next meeting, like I said, would be October third. And at that council meeting, then you would elect somebody if you so choose to, so.
Councilor Weisenberg?
Yeah, I just, uh, Rawlins was represented on this prior to last election and, and it's a big, big deal to have a representation if we can. I think myself personally, I think we should put a nomination in and, uh, I'd like to see that on the next agenda if possible, Mayor. Um, the other thing is, is it does say that these individuals are going to seek reelection also in here. Um, is there any, has anybody had any concerns, anything? Cause we haven't really had any kind of update or anything and it used to, having a representation kind of helps with that kind of stuff. So I, I think, uh, like I said, I think it's, would be beneficial for Rawlins for sure if we could have some kind of nomination go on.
I have not heard anything as a city clerk of anything regarding any issues or anything like that. These individuals, when you receive the ballot, even if you do not put somebody on, will have a small bio because anytime somebody, if you make a nomination, I have to submit a bio to them and that goes on the ballot. So if you would like some background on these individuals, I do have an old, the old ballots. So I can actually provide that to you if you would like to know any of these individuals. With me being new to Wyoming, I am not familiar, but I know you gentlemen and lady, you, you all know these probably, these individuals quite well, I just do not, so. But if, if I can help you with anything, please let me know, yes.
Well, I think if anybody's interested in, uh, running for that, you should express yourself at the next meeting when we do that nomination. That's what I would say.
What do you want, okay. I was going to ask that, if anybody here was actually interested in that because it takes time and it's traveling, a lot of travel with that, you know, when they have meetings, so.
Yes. Meetings are usually held in Cheyenne and they're usually during the day. I just know from the documentation they provided to me over the.
Some of them are Zoom, some of them are travel, but.
I, I think some of them are getting away.
Think there's four a year.
Yeah, I think they're getting away from Zoom, but that's, that's, yeah, so. But that's what I know. I, if you have any more questions and I can't answer, I can get the information and then I could, you know, have Tom or somebody send that information out to all the council members, whatever information you're looking for.
Don't send it to me. Not interested, no.
Well, I think it's good to point out it's a three-year term.
Yes.
And if you're running for reelection and you were nominated and, and voted in and, and you only have a year left, you're only going to serve the, the community for a year. And then they go in and they vote on another individual to, to take that over. So my, my thoughts, this is just personally, my thoughts is, uh, individuals that, I mean, do what, nominate if you want, but individuals that seek, would like to seek this from our council, I believe, uh, it'd be in the best interest of the city to have a longer-term person that's, that's not up for reelection, so.
I agree. All right, anything else? This meeting is adjourned, next meeting's the third of next month.
There will be a work session too.